There we go.
You're on, you're on.
Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, January 14th, 2016. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to say, it was wonderful to hear a child recite that with me. It's always so nice to hear that. Thank you for joining us with that. Okay, we will start off the meeting with the approval of our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve budget and finance minutes of January 6th, 2016, governance minutes of January 8th, 2016, and safety minutes of December 10th, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to accept warrants number 26P16, number 28P16, 27V16, and 29V16.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We were busy. Look at all those minutes.
We were busy.
That's good. I like to see that.
Very busy.
Okay, we have, it says Maggie on the... So we have Megan O'Grady here from the high school. How are things going?
Hi. Things are going good. We just finished up our DECA district conference. We had 34 out of our 44 participating students make it move on to states. So that was great. I think that's the highest percentage we've ever had. The high school play is about a month away, three weeks, I think, away from February.
So how could committee members get tickets if they wanted?
They're online.
Okay.
Oh, great.
Through the high school site?
Yes.
That's great.
Yes.
Do you still need costume donations or anything?
Yeah, I think we look for, I think we're looking for waiter outfits. So black pants, like white shirts, black vests, things of that sort. And then I think more fabric. I think the costume lady, Mrs. Laplaca, Christine Laplaca, makes a lot of the long skirts that we're gonna have to wear, so.
So when people donate things like that, like say a white shirt with black, do they get them back?
Yes.
Okay, so they just put their name on it?
Yeah.
So it's not expected to just, that you won't get them back?
Yeah, no, you'll, yeah.
Because there was a long list on that morning announcements of things needed.
Unless you want to donate it and want it back.
Yeah, unless you want to, yeah.
Okay, that's good. Do you practice every day?
Mostly every day. As, as the date gets closer, we practice more days. But as of right now, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Wow, that's a lot.
It's fun though. I enjoy it.
That's good.
It's gonna be awesome. I can just, I just can tell. Just the things, little bit I've seen, it's gonna be great.
Yeah, it's all starting to come together now, so.
That's good. And it's February?
February 4th, 5th, and 6th, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
And you're gearing up for midterms?
Yep, those are all next week. Yeah, so.
So that's a hectic schedule.
Yeah, yeah. I think, well, as a senior, it's a little more lenient some of the classes, but for the underclassmen, it's a lot to...
You remember the days, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That's good. And sports are going well?
Yep, sports are going well. I think boys and girls basketball have a pretty good season. I'm not sure their, the scores, but, well, I think that's it for, yeah.
Yeah, they're both playing tomorrow night.
Yep, yeah, Newburyport.
Newburyport.
Oh, in Newburyport?
Girls are away.
Girls are away, boys are home.
Okay. And the middle school girls lost, but it was a great game today, and the boys won. So they had a good, they had a good game. Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk this evening? Okay, we have a treat this evening. We have the Friedman family here.
Like three treats, you know, sharing my invention. Actually, no, four, because my brother's gonna sneak in, like he brought in a light thingy, like a light thing, which is mainly part of my whole invention thing, but he will be helping demonstrate it. And I'm quite glad to be making this thing, because then I get to be here with you guys.
Oh, that's so nice.
So why don't you come up?
Do you want to come on up?
Why don't you come up to the table? You guys can come up and bring a chair.
And thank you for the wonderful desserts that you brought. That was very nice of you.
Sit down at the table, Chase. You can sit right there. Sit in the big chair, and your dad can come up, and your brother and your mom, anybody.
Pull up another chair.
Does anyone want to sit here?
Sure, you can sit in the big chair.
Does Mrs. Friedman want to come on up? Well, thank you for coming tonight.
All right, Kira, let's start out with yours, because this is kind of annoying.
Thank you.
Like he makes a slide.
Makes a noise.
Turn yours on. See, it works. Is this not on?
Yes, I'm looking forward to it.
Oh my god.
Look at that. It lights up.
Yeah, me and my dad, I mean, him and my dad made it, I guess. Um, so yeah, it's annoying a little bit, but you know, you might, with the light, the whole light thing. Mine has said it's like zero point energy. I don't know what's going on with that whole thing, but yeah.
So we are happy to have you. We had heard about your invention, and you were on the news.
And I'm happy to be here.
Good.
And if you see Big Kira said inventions are just like, he knows, microbots. You know, you know what's the word?
Oh, he also has microbots? Is that what you told us? Yes.
You know what's the weird thing? I, I heard like, do you know Eva's dad, Mr. Murphy, which does one of the enrichment classes? I heard Eva told me that...
He's usually here.
Yeah, I know he...
He often comes to the meetings. He might come a little later.
I'm confused.
No, he comes to, but he's not here, but he comes usually.
Wait a minute.
No, no.
Oh, he's looking at himself on the TV.
So, so Chase?
They have some questions for you.
Chase? It's because there's a camera that's pointing, is looking at you, and then the people at home can see. So, so that's what's happening. So you keep talking to the committee, and then the public can see you.
Nice.
So did you have any questions about it?
Well, maybe can you tell us a little bit about it, and like, how it came about and demo it?
This is basically...
Three, two, one.
Yep. So, you know, this one can be opened up.
Do you want to tell them how it came up, how you came up with the idea?
Yes, um, well, actually, you can go through this while I do that, while I, you know, careful with your surroundings.
Oh, very nice. So...
This one around, this one is...
Okay, why don't you cover this side?
Well, the, I actually want to be you. So I got to go to BU, which is Boston University.
Let, let me start with how we came about doing this. You don't have to worry about that. So we...
He's pretty interested in that.
We, we, we were playing Legos last summer. Chase, Chase, let me give the background, and then you can talk about the journey we've been on. We were playing Legos last summer, and Chase is the opposite of shy, as you see. And he, we've, I mean, we've encouraged this, I think all of his teachers have encouraged this, where if he has ideas, you know, talk them out, and he's been a faucet of ideas since he was about four or five. Well, this one, he's always talking about improving things or doing things differently, and talking about machines, and his favorite shows growing up were How It's Made or Modern Marvels. You know, these, these really cool shows.
Oh, he is Mr. Murphy.
So, oh, great.
Still looking at himself on TV.
So...
Why no, you're here? Okay, you know what?
Not to let everybody know we're late.
Eva told me you would be here, and I was like, and I realized, so I forgot that Eva told me you were gonna be here. And then I was like, like, and then I realized.
Bobby, we need to have the kid here every time.
Maybe you should go here.
So...
I hope you'll call again.
Chase?
Cookies, because we brought in cookies.
Okay, Chase, Chase, let me finish, and then you can have the floor back. So he came up with this idea. We were playing Legos, and we were going back and forth doing sound effects. We built a spaceship, and he said, wouldn't it be great if we could record these sounds and have them played back when we were on the ship? I've, a lot of my friends are into this maker stuff, which probably...
Maker space. Remember, we've talked about the maker spaces.
And, and, and the company I work for, Intel, is really into fostering it. So it's just something on a day-to-day basis that we're surrounded by. We, I took Chase to the MIT museum in September, and around that time, we started building a prototype together. And, and what, what happened is he, I got him involved, Chase?
He's telling Mr. Murphy the story.
All right, I'll let him...
You go ahead. We're okay. We're, he can follow you.
So, so basically what I decided to do with him, because I also noticed that when he was bringing like his homework home, particularly his math homework, he started in second grade, they start talking about arrays. And, and there's arrays in his code. So it simultaneously, we're, I was able to show him, well, the same arrays you're doing in your math, you're learning, that's how we store sounds in the application. Or as we're learning to count or multiply, that factors into how a game works. So I was trying to make it more relevant, just because, just to indulge him more, to sort of extend this experience. And we went through the whole gamut where I hired a couple of teams in Boston. We went to BU. He learned how to do the circuitry and the soldering of the circuits. We had a recent grads from the Mass College of Art actually design a case and, and help do the 3D printing of it. The stuff that was just extremely enlightening. So the whole, the whole gamut. And then we, we just got a lot of interest from people, and, and we made an attempt to, to bring it to market already, but we're gonna relaunch probably later this month or next month.
So you're looking to like patent?
Well, we, we did file a provisional patent. He did, for Chase, and then we'd have to do the formal patent this year.
It would be great to go to that movie, like the TV show with a shark tank. And present it to see if maybe Mr. Cuban provides some money for that.
Mr. Wonderful. Mike, I'm very interested in that.
We're hoping, we're hoping to get it out in an initial wave through like Kickstarter or Indiegogo and get people to get hands-on initially, because he's, as you can see, they're very excited to share it and engage with people. We're gonna probably do a demo night at Flatbread. I talked to the owner.
Oh, that's a neat idea.
They'd love to have that.
And, and so people can get their hands on it in town, because we realized the first time through, we didn't let him show it, although Mrs. McGinnis was, was kind enough to let him show it to the kids in his class. And that was exciting. That turned into a whole math exercise, which was amazing. So, yeah, it's just, like, I, I think one of the great things about this is he's able to sort of indulge and talk about with students, and everybody seems to, whether it's because of how kids are so adept to, you know, working with games and apps, or just coding seems to be there already. They just, they're hungry for it. You know, they're hungry for that, like to apply what they learn to something to build. So I think it's been, it's a really good journey. And if you'd like, we can demo it. Would you like to demo it?
Yes.
Okay, so let's load up the app here.
Can I just ask you, how were you able to get the meteor attention when it was on the news?
I wanted to raise attention so you know how to use this.
Well...
Because that was a great segment.
Yeah, the, the BZ segment, and he's, and actually, his Chronicle is gonna air a segment on him Wednesday of next week.
Okay.
The 20th, they said. So they'll be covering, they came to the house. Yeah, it's funny, the best part about it is when I talk to these producers, and they're like, where, where are you? And I say Georgetown, and they say...
Where's that?
And then they come out here, oh, we've been here before. What a beautiful town, amazing. Are they teaching this stuff in schools? And it turns out to this whole conversation. So Chase is pretty proud to be putting the town on the map.
Oh, my goodness.
We're proud too.
I'm just like, you know, this is...
All right, buddy, you want to?
So show us how it works, Chase.
You're gonna sing "I'm Pretty Genious" on this. So I'll tell you the reasons why I wanted to make this thing. Because I'll start out, you know, with the thing that has to do with my life, you know, to make money and stuff. Because, you know, everyone loves money, but, you know, don't love it too much, or else you'll get an agreement. No, no. So, and then the second reason... Oh, this thing is working. So the second reason why I wanted to make this, you know, so kids could have fun and, you know, you know, play with it, and, because, you know, you know, it's, it's just all...
It's fun to have fun.
Yeah.
It's fun to have.
Is there a speaker on that thing?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
We're gonna get to hear the noise.
Toys out there on the market.
Yeah, you wanna show them?
I'm talking to you, Scream.
Hey, hey, Chase, move it around in some directions and stuff, okay? Chase, you wanna move it around in some directions? Move it up and down.
That's the microphone, so if you move that, then they won't, they won't hear you.
Hello.
Chase, wanna move it around, please? Buddy?
Hi.
Chase, we have to show people at home how to use it.
Hi.
Okay, they get it. Move it around now. And what's, what's the part in there that's making, making it know what direction it's moving in, if you remember? Gyroscope?
It makes it...
Ow, and don't do this.
And can you show the buttons in the back? Can you show the buttons in the back? Can you show them how the buttons in the back are?
Yes, yeah, we'll have it, we'll have it. If you know Halo, which I'm probably sure you know.
How about, how about the X-Men credit from Star Trek? And what's the special thing about the sounds? Can you record your own sounds, Chase? Can you record your own sounds?
Yeah, you can hear it well.
Hello again. All right, so...
Do you want to give Isaac a turn to demo it? Can I have that, please?
Yeah, my brother's gonna have demo it now.
You don't have to talk in. Isaac's really good at this. Ready? Go ahead, show him how you fly that around.
Oh gosh.
That's a really neat little Lego.
Yeah, and it's meant to attach to Legos. That was the inspiration for the idea.
Wait, is this gonna be on live?
It's on, well, it's on right now.
It's on live right now, and then it's on tape, so people can see it after.
Yeah, it'll be archived for future reference.
You can go online and watch yourselves.
I noticed the camera's moving.
That's providing sound effects for...
Yeah, it connect, it connects through Bluetooth. Chase, do you want to talk about the Bluetooth? Here, which one, which part's the Bluetooth here?
Oh, yes.
Do you remember which part's the Bluetooth?
Here, I wanna put this on. So this right here is the Bluetooth. Hey, Scream, can you move in closer so I can see?
Oh, look at that.
Yeah.
Can you move in?
It's already in, it's in. She's doing it.
Well, you can talk to it.
When you talk, she's hearing you. She's in that room over there.
So did you solder that board?
So this is the Bluetooth connected to it. So, you know, I thought, you know, because of course you need Bluetooth, but...
What does the Bluetooth do? Do you remember?
So, no.
It's what sends the data to the, to the application on the tablet, right? That's how it talks, like a Fitbit.
Yes, a Fitbit, right? What's a Fitbit?
That's what mommy wears on her wrist to tell her how much steps she walks to it.
Yes, Fitbit. So... Yeah. So the point is, you know, I might need a break.
You might need a brain a break.
Yeah, I'll go for a break, so...
There's a delay on that. So we'll, we'll, thank you, Chase.
I'll be, I just want a break. Can I?
So, yeah, so we can, this is very interesting. We were very curious about it.
Yeah.
And actually, the interesting thing, when I, when I was, okay, when I was hearing you talk about the maker stuff.
Yes.
You know, Margaret and Julie and I actually have been looking at STEM stuff for a while. In fact, they went to an actual workshop on, on it, and I had done some work with a group of people on maker spaces. And I, that was one of our goals, was to find a space at Pembroke to create a maker space. Because, but we need somebody who, who might be able to help us set it up, run it, and all that kind of... There was amazing, amazing things you can do. They're showing you, but there's so many, like I, there was a, I don't know what the, the machine was, but the task was make, it was like a piano. There was a piano thing on the, on the piano and on the computer. And you had to figure out a way, using this device, to make the piano play on the computer while you touch your partner's head.
Yep.
And it had all to, this to do with circuitry, and you had to understand, and they had lemons and fruits, and, and you had to understand about conductors and all that kind of stuff, but they figured it out. They didn't know what the science behind it was, but they were able to figure it out.
I know exactly.
It was fascinating stuff.
Yeah, it's, we, we did, we had a workshop for the kids that, and we did that, but I...
So maybe we'll call you and help you get some ideas on that.
Yeah, it's...
We love that. That'd be awesome. Really, the stuff is awesome that you can do.
Isaac, can I have that for a second? Actually, I'll show you this one. They, we added an adapter on the bottom, so you could program this to do that kind of stuff, but I know exactly what you're talking about.
We had hoped tonight to be able to do some information on, like, the programs we're doing in the schools with coding.
Yeah.
Because we're definitely doing, you know, work with that, but we weren't able to get that together.
Yeah, I, well, I'm happy to share and prepare and help you guys explore that when, when, when the timing's ready. But, yeah, it's, it's really phenomenal for kids to, to learn.
They're obviously very excited. Look how young your youngest son is and how excited he is.
Yeah, he's next. He's next, but we'll use the state for his Saturday Night Live.
Thank you so much for coming, Isaac.
So with that, you can make your own sound, so you can use the ones that are, the pre-made ones, and then you can also go in and record yourself?
Yes. Thank you for coming to that conclusion.
Hello, hello.
App actually lets you record your own sound.
Which might be neat for the kids to want to...
Oh, they hear their own sounds that they make. Oh, yeah.
That's really the magic of it. And then when we relaunch this, we're actually gonna do, one of the best pieces of feedback I got was from a teacher who wanted us to do more activities. So out of the box, it'll say, it'll give you step-by-step, you know, how to, how to put it together, how to reprogram it, how to make a game. One, actually, one of the things that we're, we're working on lately for the relaunch, which is another cool thing that kids can do, is... Can I see that, buddy? Can I see that? Thank you.
What the, Mr. Snacky?
She's probably going crazy.
So this is actually, Chase, we're gonna show the 3D game that we did. So this actually controls the airplane in space. And so Chase actually wrote the code here that prevents it from crashing on the ground, which is a greater-than sign, which I think we're, that he's just getting into in, in class. But, yeah, this is really sort of the next step with what you can do with this, and kind of make your own 3D-controlled games. And there's real, it's so easy to do this for kids. I mean, it's, it actually, I didn't even realize how simple it was for him, but this is one of the things that we're gonna package with it, and I'd love to see more of the kids get involved in doing stuff like this.
We'd like to have you become more involved with us.
Yeah, rather than, rather than just sitting and playing, you know, the games, actually, you know, apply some skills to making their own experiences.
How does it compare to like the, the new VR stuff?
Yeah.
Same, I don't want to say, I know it's not the same, but same sort of...
Concept.
Concept or...
Well, I think the new VR stuff is intended to, you know how you're, you're one step removed from reality when you're staring at a screen?
Right.
The VR stuff's actually further removed from that.
Right.
And actually, you know, you're in your own world. Kind of the way, you know, listening to music in speakers in a room with other people, and then you put headphones on, and you're sort of in isolation. I think the VR thing is headed in that direction.
All right, let me...
Whereas what we're trying, what we're trying to do with this is actually make it more of a thing you do with a parent, or a thing you do with your friends. Yeah, and then, and then you'll see, like with the, with Isaac, he's a little bit more athletic and energetic. He'll take this and run around the room with it. So rather than just, you know, Legos are amazing creativity, but you sit and you build, and you put in a thing, it's a static experience, so I, we're trying, you know, infuse more activity with it. So it hits on all things, and it's, you asked about media coverage, that's the hardest part, because you spend all this time building and innovating and, you know, guiding someone like, you know, a child like Chase to, to do this and do that. And then there's whatever's left in you, you have to figure out how to contact this, and that's, yeah.
Well, he's definitely getting a lot of exposure, which is great.
I, I, yeah, if, if, he certainly appreciates the TV coverage, but, yeah, it'll be, it's, it's good. When he, when he gets in there, you know, and he gets into talking about other kids and what it can do with other kids, I think that's really the big payoff for him.
Absolutely.
And then obviously, when, when he, when it comes time to go to school, maybe he'll be able to say, I went to this college and built this with you guys, and it'll be a shoo-in for him.
Absolutely.
Good stuff.
Good job, good job.
So, all right, I'm back in the house.
Well, our time's up. They have to do more of their meeting.
We are very impressed with this. I think you're gonna do great things.
Yeah, that's right. Can you, can you just tell us about the relaunch?
Well, actually, no.
And when, when that's gonna happen?
Well, I'm free for questions, so if you got any questions, I'm free for it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do a lot better job sharing about it now. We have a lot more enthusiasm. We'll probably kick it, when we do, and it's probably, probably three or four weeks away from it, we'll have something at Flatbread. We'll have sort of a kickoff event there.
Yeah, let us know when you're gonna do that, because I'd love to...
Thank you. Yeah, it's exciting, and it'll have a lot of activities and a lot of good stuff. We're gonna introduce a, a pack where people could like buy a handful of them and like donate them to a camp or to a school. Because there's also too, in the summer, I know you're gonna talk about this, there's so, there's so much interest in kids not just doing the typical baking in the sun thing, but, you know, doing more, you know, structured fun and learning. So I love, I love the fact that our town is so involved with that. And I'd love to see a maker space at Pembroke.
All right, we're gonna work with us on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So let's push that out of the way.
I'm just gonna hand out some stickers for you.
Okay.
Chase, our time's up, so say thank you.
So let's push that out of the way, and let's go to the questions. Got any questions for us?
I think your dad answered a lot of the questions, and you did too as well, which we appreciate.
Thank you, Isaac.
And I'm excited to watch you on Chronicle next week.
All right, so I will see you guys on the TV.
If you make another invention, you can come back again, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing what you've done.
Yes, I will be, I will be following with you guys. I'll be watching you on TV and stuff. I'll be following.
I think, I also, it's, it, I hope it goes without saying, but with, if not for the great school system, and Mrs. Mars been every, every year with Chase, I don't think we would've even gotten to this point. So I'm grateful for all the stuff.
So peace out, everyone, and peace out, everyone on the screen. Peace out.
Bye-bye. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. That was wonderful.
That was really...
Suzanne thinks that we should have a child care every week.
She really said the entertainment.
I think that's great.
Excellent. Thank you so much for coming. It was really great.
Thank you. Thanks for letting the kids entertain you.
And thank you for dessert.
A dessert, that's right.
So we're gonna move into the Camp Invention, which I think is a great segue.
So come on up. That's, that's, that was the purpose. So Heidi, come on up, you ladies. Christine, come on now. Come on, girls.
I know it's hard to follow this.
Can you top that? Here, sit, have me, pull up a chair, guys. Margaret, you can come up if you want to. Up to you. Julie's here too. Good.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
These ladies made it happen. They took a, a belief and made it a reality.
Yeah, this is a great, great thing that got going.
I don't know if we can follow that show, but I know it's... Let's try.
That was great.
What happened was, it was Julie's idea. Julie brought it to Georgetown Camp Invention, and she was trying to sell it on me, and I didn't want to teach at the end of the school year, so I said I'd direct it. And we had two fabulous teachers.
That's right.
And it's so overwhelming when you get it. We got, we got the parts, and Julie's kids are at a school in April. And if I didn't go over there and see that program, I don't know. I'm a visual learner.
Yeah, that's funny. That's nice.
And I was, thank goodness we did, because when I came back, I was like, oh my god, and I wanted to set it up right away. Because you really need large spaces. You needed four big classrooms. We had two classrooms, so Laura did one classroom, and Chris did the other classroom. We split the kids by ages. And we'll show you, we put together a PowerPoint, so we can go along to show you. We also need the outdoors. It has to do with a lot of outdoors. So why don't we get to this first, and then we'll tell you. This is what we sent out. This is the flyer that got sent out to introduce Camp Invention. Last year, we did it during this week. We had 33 campuses, one director, two teachers, eight high school leaders, four CITs, and six volunteers. It takes a village. We figured that out, absolutely. And a sport of Julie and Margaret was there the whole time too, every day. So you really need this to make it happen all day long. What we ended up doing was, it was four days a week, because it was a short week, and it was nine to four. It was a long day. And what we did, we started having the kids come in between eight and nine. It was a roll-in. And what we did we we started having the kids come in between eight and nine it was a roll-in and in Camp Invention they have these games that you do it's called base camp. You can do them before camp during camp um the lunchtime and we do them at the end of camp. And if you see on the tables the tic-tac-toes over there um it's a different way of playing tic-tac-toe it was awesome we ended up having a turn a bit.
Fun yeah.
And the kids went nuts but this is the staff and the campers um. They have four components to it last year it's different every single year so last year it was cartwheel. Um what they had to do there is they had to build a go-kart altogether that was the ending function. And Laura taught two of these groups and Chris taught the other two groups and they can talk more about it when we we finished I'd love to for them to speak too. But these were the four components the campuses usually are engineering skills to glide them across the finish line as they build their go-karts at the end of the whole week. Their go-kart that they made they had to go through an obstacle course and um that was a riot they were throwing water balloons at each other I mean it was amazing to see. In each group you can see what they had to do the big things were um doing a three D maze because they're all into video games they were making a video game. And um launching rockets Chris had them launching rockets into pools of water and picking up on the bottom of the ocean.
That was really good. The Kwanzaa who helped you the Kwanzaa guys just to help you with the ra- rocket launching? What was the group that did that there was some else some some of our?
Uh I don't I remember just getting all the parts so when when I arrived when the teachers arrived everything.
Heidi that did it.
No that what happens is they that was something different.
Oh that was a different okay.
With um with this with Camp Invention they give you everything. The boxes came in and Julie came in and I just looked at Julie and I went oh there was forty-two boxes. And I'm like really we have to unpack this and set up the rooms I was overwhelmed. And um but they give you everything and we had an abundance that we had leftovers that we have it down at Pearly we have the stuff that we can use. So um they give you everything they give you the whole kit and caboodle of what to teach like Laura was given I gave her her two I gave Chris her two all they had to do is read it. Get those pieces out and they were good to go so it's unbelievable what they give you. The emphasis on the camp huge um children had to work together for all the activities you couldn't isolate yourself. And that was the hard part as they could speak about it afterwards. Um socially they had to interact they had to listen they had to talk they had to take turns and they had to accept each other's ideas or come to a happy medium and at times that's hard to do. They had to problem solve create and it was a lot of outside of the box thinking um lots of it but it was all hands-on. And um the kids at the end of four days we were exhausted. They were more exhausted than I was yeah it was hot it was sweaty.
Yeah.
And all they kept on saying was can we do this some more can we do it the whole summer and we were like no one one week.
The high school kids were having a blast.
The high school kids had a blast they were great now these are some of the pitches and some of the things. Laura had challenges every day every day you have to have a water challenge Laura you wanna explain this one?
Yeah um they had a water challenge so they worked with the same team to build their cartwheel over the course of the week. And through the water challenge they made a shield you can kinda see in the background and every day they were given a little bit of time in the morning to improve their shield. Based on their previous experiences in the week and the shield would protect them from getting wet in the water balloon challenge and. Every day we incorporated different components and other materials to the challenge and the team that was the least wet in the challenge would get the most points. To use in the store to build um to buy materials for their go-kart so they the incentive was huge. Um the materials when um Heidi's talking about them giving all the materials we even used the boxes that the materials came in. Like every single thing you can think of recyclables um.
Skateboards.
Yeah skateboards the blow-up rafts had some use to the kids that I never would've thought of like they found value in any anything you gave them any material you gave them. Um so they were improving their go-karts over the course of the week so um the the challenges were so fun that was probably one of their favorite parts of the day and they loved being wet.
Always doing water balloons yeah.
And not getting wet was a hard challenge too. Um we had such a beautiful week though the weather couldn't have been better um the kids were just so motivated.
All happy look at them.
Yeah.
So how did you determine who was the wettest?
It was I think the high school kids would take a vote they'd all get together um and decide which team would get the amount of points and then every day they were given time. To go to the store to buy materials and they had to decide as a team how they wanted to use their points and which materials would be the best for their go-kart. Um so a lot of teamwork and a lot of building upon what they had been doing as the week went on a lot of trial and error. And thinking what is going to work and what's not.
Well and as Heidi mentioned it is hard for adults let alone children.
Yeah.
To come to agreement and things like that and and just realize that they're doing it for the better betterment of the whole which is interesting to see that.
It sounds a lot like destination imagination you know a lot of the components and then they go out and they compete in this.
Yeah this was one of the challenge games too. Getting it in the bucket it was ping pong balls.
Yeah uh using a lever so they were learning how that works.
Who did the launching didn't you do the launching?
I had the rocket launching it because you had to get the the swimming pool was the moon and then you had to design a rocket using using a set 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 of materials. And then they would go out and test it and see which how far you could go and it actually hit the pool which means you land on the moon yeah.
Oh.
And uh they'll it's a lot about physics you know it's a lot about force and motion what I teach every day so uh it's a pretty cool experience I I I I I wish we could've done it for longer. You know.
It was fun too from a teaching perspective seeing the younger kids I got to teach each class twice to the younger kids at one point in the day and the older group at another point. And just the conversations and how the kids work together um were so different but so cool in themselves.
This is one of the games that they um did for the base camp and it's um it was a challenge for tic-tac-toe. And we had actually winners for it so this was one of their favorite games during base camp. Laura you did the?
Yeah um that was for their video game they got to create their own character. So each kid got to create their own character which was kinda nice that they got to make their own heroes.
And that was to do with the video game too um Alexia's in my class she was the youngest camper. Um and there was a picture and I told her mother her mother's um Allison Rahani that works at the high school.
Oh yeah.
And um Alexia was the youngest and at one point of the day she was like this and I took a picture I couldn't find it. Um on here because it was on my other computer but she fell asleep like this because it was such a long day. And I looked at her I snapped the picture and she just opened her eyes she looked at me and went. But it was so cute and that's how I I get it that the kids have to go into first grade to start like kindergarten would've been too young she's in my room this year in first grade so.
It was great that they kept them moving all day though.
Yeah it was it was non-stop.
It was non-stop yeah.
They were never in one place.
Heidi Montjo's daughter she loved it she kept on saying I wanna come back I wanna come back I wanna come back.
I think she tried tried to raid my buttons she was like I want more button batteries.
And those were the button batteries that's why I had to put her in there I'm like everybody loved those so you worked a lot with those.
Yeah so my so what happens we kinda naturally we just picked sections of the book we kinda like reviewed the sections well I like this one I like that one. And it just happens that hers was a lot more the you know IT and the go-karts and mine was more sort of like engineering design process with with with. Devices with you know motion physics and all that stuff and just happened to kinda go that way. And what I found is that the two groups like she said very very different but what happens is they fed off each other so if somebody was sort of like lacking for ideas well here's with the younger kids and then. Oh and then we can do this and the extension was just so much more really uh really just an amazing feedback of ideas with with the groups both together.
And they had in your in her classroom too they had a booklet where they had to um draw it out.
I had drawn it up beforehand.
Which I thought was great beforehand so they had to do that thinking beforehand. We had one room and um we got all the um bad computers from the high school that they were gonna trash it was great what a year I were like yeah we need those so. They kept bringing the towers down and we had one classroom that was all like.
Computer parts.
Yep all computer parts and all like um small there's a list that they give you so parents would bring in they were required to bring in a small appliance but then we had to go through it. To get rid of like the the bad parts and they tell you exactly what to get rid of then they give you a whole set of tools screw dives and hammers and. And goggles we had like forty-two goggles cause that was the thing they had to be careful and they I think they loved this room the best. You know cause they got to take things apart and they used the pieces to make the video game and the only thing um what we found where like at first I was like okay we got a first date kit okay and I was. And the only thing it was is it was the cuts on their fingers because they'd they'd hit them and we're like no 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 and we had to show them how to use the tools because and then it's like. Miss Bigan Miss Bigan I was the big day queen it was like all right yeah so.
So no issues with that though.
Nothing nothing. Nothing and you would think that's what I was kind of. But nothing.
You went to camp to have fun you came home abandoned.
The kids didn't care though you'd have to kinda notice they were bleeding they were just so into it.
They keep going and this is something you did?
So this is in my room uh we had instructions to make the tallest tower possible out of paper they it didn't matter how much the paper they used they were being judged on height. So they did some sort of quick little sketches to figure out which one would be which would have the most stable base cause it had to had to be freestanding. And uh the high school kids really got into this amazingly enough they were you know they were standing on top of desks on top of chairs and I'm saying oh dear. Uh but they'd all determined that it needed to have a wider base than at the top it had to have some good strong support in the middle. And I think we probably used I think maybe eight to ten rolls of masking tape I mean they li- and that was math paper so it was it's very thin paper to begin with. So there's uh Erica Newton she's like I love this challenge and some of them came up with some really amazing designs I mean look at the architecture in that particular tower. It wasn't the tallest until they started to really put spy the spire on the top and that's pretty much what ended up. Everybody had like a spire on the top and then we touched the ceiling.
Really?
And then and the tower went burn. But uh just.
After you took the picture though right?
Well yeah yeah well I think we had to have some of the some of the really tall boys as you can see in the background there the boy with the blue shirt. I mean he's he's on he's on a chair and he's just on his tippy toes trying to get that last piece of tape around the top and uh it was it was phenomenal seeing the process the thinking process the co- compromising was tough. Some some just did not wanna compromise but um you know that's things that we all have to work out in our lives. You know that type of communication skills like okay if you're unhappy about it you have to say why and then the other person has to understand and then provide positive feedback to try to help make this work.
That was the strongest thing that was the strongest thing out of this camp that I think the kids got out of.
Yeah gotta communicate.
We had a lot of the CITs like Erica Newton she was fabulous they stay with the kids she was wonderful. Um they stay with the kids and they work with them all day long so they had a blast yeah you're right just as well so.
So this was another one of uh another one of my activities uh students had to design a boat. And a boat that would float and there were very few uh perfectly plastic hulls so they were taking things like cardboard and covering them with Saran Wrap. And again the use of tape was excessive um but they also had to not just build a boat that floats but they had to build a boat that would pick up certain objects in the water so there was tinfoil shrimp. There was a jelly ring jellyfish um there was a couple of other small things that were kinda stuck to the bottom that are out of the frame here. And they they could not touch the water but they had to operate their crane to pick up the object and put it in the boat. And so getting that to work that that crane arm was very challenging for some groups they were just like it keeps tipping over my boat sunk. Yeah you know but it was just that was that was prob- they could've spent days developing that boat and making it sure that it was perfectly watertight and could pick up the most load. It was great you only had five minutes I think to pick up as many objects as you could in the pool.
And the the way that they get the stuff is the parents brought in um all the recyclables and that was the fourth room. So we had two classrooms we had a machine room the take apart room and then we had the recyclable room and they would give them the tasks and tell them okay go to the recyclable room. And they'd go in the recyclable room and they had to pick and choose and that the conversations in there well this will work with this and that's what it was it was all made out of recycled stuff. And the tape they gave us tape they gave us masking tape and and um duct tape and there was one point that I looked at Laura and said we're not gonna have enough for the rest of the week so we started hoarding some and putting it away. And come to find out the last day we're like hair they didn't even use it because I have some leftover like I have like five boxes that you know five in a box. Margaret that's your granddaughter that's Helena Helena came to camp yeah.
Working within constraints is something that you know that we do in the business world every day is you have to work within your budget work within your constraints and that's.
Oh we know that.
And and when you're incorporating constraints all of a sudden people are like oh I don't wanna do it this way oh so yeah so this um oh my goodness I can't remember his name.
Logan Schofield.
Uh so his device was a robotic hand he and his friend were trying to figure out how to make a robotic arm cause one of the things with you had to make a device to help people so somebody. So he he had some strings that was atta- that was attached to some cardboard fingers and you would pull that string and the hand would close. Which I thought was just phenomenal I've seen variations on the theme but that was exceptional it was really just out of this world great. Uh some of them made a um robotic leg some of them made um like like uh the cure-all pill and let me tell you this thing was the size of like a softball. And it had and and so and so what all these little beads mean it was like basically a Play-Doh wrapped around a foam ball and there was beads that stuck on the outside well this one cures this one and this one cures this one and this one cures that one. And just the fact that and and I know that somebody's gonna eat this and get well.
Oh that's funny sweet.
Yes so um and that was and that was just some of the the ideas they they once they got going cause they kinda get a little they watch a little video of somebody who's designed something like that. And they said now you can do it too and so we spent a few minutes sort of brainstorming where do we think there's a need for something what do you think we should do? And then then that's how the the wheels get started.
It was great because the program comes with music like pump they call it like pump music.
Pump music yeah.
Music going all the time the videos were great a little bit instructional a little bit motivational.
Yep.
So it had like every component there for the day.
Multi-modal learning.
Yeah definitely definitely.
Um this picture yep we have the two teachers but Ellie um Howard she would do a newsletter every day. A newsletter for the parent communication she did the newsletter that went home every day she actually put together a slideshow at the end of the at the end of the week. When the when the parents got invited back in to see the go-karts and then go into the classrooms to see everything that they made and build and they could walk around it was like we had a museum. Then um she also put together the slideshow and Michael Kelly which I saw a couple weeks ago. Michael everybody knows Mike I can't say enough about that boy okay.
He was counselor of the week.
Yeah counselor he's fabulous I mean that kid's gonna go far in life um I told him his parents should be proud of him because he did such a fabulous job so.
They both did great jobs.
They both did yeah all of them did all of them really did.
That newsletter was very impressive.
It was and she wrote it she took upon herself and she was I was like well you have to do a newsletter she was like oh I'm a writer and I'm like here you go and she was just like yeah you know so.
Do you have a cap on um the amount of kids attending?
No that's the thing like um we could take they they said thirty-five is your start and we had thirty-three they take they took them as low as twenty-eight like in Beverly they took a twenty-eight so I was like oh great they took it. What happens is if we get it's kinda like a cap if you get to a hundred and ten kids you split it because now we had two groups. But now if we have enough kids this year we might have to go to three groups and already a teacher came up to me the other day and said do you need help with that can I teach that and I'm like well right now I have my two teachers but guess what can I put you in line because if we get this amount of kids we need a third classroom. And they give you the whole schedule when it breaks down to threes when it breaks down to fours when it break down to fives so it's.
So do you take kids from other districts or is this just strictly so?
No you can um any any child can go anywhere because there's different things offered like this year it's different from last year but like it's the same. But it might be different from last year right so they'll go someplace else.
Different.
Yep because we start yeah.
Yes.
Yep and that's just the parent communication that I put down and the big thing is you have to pick um a camp parent and Tamara Schofield um she was our camp parent so she was in charge of the media. Which was awesome because she's a Realtor.
Yes.
So um getting her was great she did all the social advertisements the shout-outs it was all over Facebook she even put um she took flyers from me and she put them on um the pizza boxes in town. So yeah um Pomodori's I think did it for us which was great and um she flagged the whole town so yeah and that's what you do you have to get a um camp parent too that's one of the components like I. When we took the directors I'm like Julie okay we have to do this this okay okay and I check it off but um and they get a little bit like off for their child. And that's the thing with this camp too um if you like we had three scholarships so we could pick three children that we can give in need um a a program. So and we'll do the same thing this year and we were thinking about you know having the people that that can't afford it send a little blurb to us why do you want your child to come even that why does your child wanna come you gotta send us a blurb and then. We'll narrow it down from there and because it is two hundred and forty-five dollars when you apply um if you go online now like it will start when we give her the green light. It's actually they give you like until like February thirteenth you'll have fifteen dollars off and then then they'll have another one that says now you have. It's an incentive you get in early you get money off so it's really good.
Pretty reasonable though.
Very reasonable.
It's nine to four?
Nine to four.
Yeah four days.
For four days and this is this year which I'm so excited about I am so excited about this year um. If you go online you just Google it anybody can Google this and um this is the two thousand and sixteen program so this year we're doing a cricket bot. And this different components so the four components of the cricket bot where you make a cricket and it jumps and everything you make tree houses with it an epic park. Um amusement park for your cricket I can invent maker studio that's good that's the same thing like that's the we'll be making yes a video game that such like that with the with the room again. And then the lab where pigs fly and that's more of what Chris taught which she'll love because she'll be launching things again. Just to give you a a little taste. And when I watched it last year for it, I, I saw it and I grasped it a little bit. But I didn't realize that's really true, like until Julie brought me over for the field trip. And I went, my god, it's the same thing in the video, this is unreal. And then I went back to these two and said, oh my god, I was out of my mind. So then when I watched this the other night, I was really out of my mind because it, that really is, like you really, really do all that stuff and the kids love it. I can't say enough and I'm so glad Julie brought it to town because I, I am like, fully.
So what's the ages?
Um, you have to be going, going into first grade?
Yep.
And, and going into fifth grade. So it's first through fifth. And then, um, sixth graders, like we can take so many CITs that register. Um, and they, they, they're a little bit of money.
Formula of so many kids, you want so many CITs?
There are, there's a formula that they give us and it's like a hundred and twenty dollars that a CIT pays. Um, and then for a leader, they get credits towards, um, like volunteer, community service. And it all depends how many, like, like Mike was one of the leaders. So, um, there's four of those and Ellie was one of those, so you have four leaders and then the rest of them are volunteers, so. But there is a formula, it depends on how many you have.
Yeah.
And that's how many you get.
So what, what are you hoping for?
Well, we had thirty-five last year, what do you think, girls?
I think it'll be bigger this year.
I think it will be bigger this year.
I think it will be.
I wonder how many will come back?
Oh, and if they come back too, like online, you get money off already. Like, people returning, I, I think it's twenty dollars off.
I think you'll get a lot of repeat people.
I do too, because it was just so, and I think people, like, go try it and we'll see how that works. And then kids found out about the go-carts and everything.
What we might, what we might wanna do is send a letter to the people who came last year, just a personal letter that basically says, this is the plan for this coming year, we hope you'll come back. Yeah, and with the twenty.
And they usually get it, they get it too, like, um, Morgan Ball is our representative. And, you know, she's just waiting for me, can you give me the green light? And I'm like, not until the school committee meeting. And I'll give it to you Friday morning.
I bet they're gonna say no tonight. I remember when you mentioned it to Julie about your son going, I remember that. Or that it was in your community.
And I wanted to do it, um, but I really didn't know a lot about it and I knew that we were really thinking about STEM and how we could bring it into the schools. And, um, so while I was talking about it, uh, with, um, Patsy Eldridge. She, she's like the regional organizer for Camp Invention. I said, how do you do this in the town and what does it look like? How do you organize that? And, um, I was telling my kids about it and they were saying, oh, I wanna go to that. And I said, well, I'm not, it's in a different town, you know, like we don't live in the same town. So, um, I actually put her in contact with my kids' principal and they ran a program too. They just happened to run it before our program, so it was great for us in the sense that we got to go and learn about how do you implement something like this? What does it look like in action? And, um, we learned a lot. I mean, Heidi has been amazing, there's, there's no question about it. The reason why it's successful is because of these people right here, there's, there's no question.
That's true.
And Heidi has an incredible amount of energy and when she is in it, it, she's in it to win it.
She is a pretty competitive person.
It's just so much work.
From past experience, which is a great thing.
It is a great thing. I think, you know, you can bring a great idea to fruition, you just, when you have the people, it's, it really makes it happen.
That's what it is, we needed a village and we got one, so.
Right. And it was so nice to see the high school kids involved and to have community parents and, you know, people doing outreach. And it's just amazing how many people you can bring together in something like this and I think we learned a lot from it. And we're excited to see how, how many kids will get involved this year. And it was a tough year because the schools were closing down and people were moving, we only had like this one week in this empty school. You know, it was just a really interesting year to try something like this, but.
So will you have it at Pembroke? We have to, yeah.
I think.
Is that what you're hoping for?
That's what I was saying.
Spaces they use.
You're saying.
Will be the senior center.
Pembroke.
Oh, so it was that wing that they.
Yes, yeah.
Um, so how do you get the information out to other districts? Is it, like, is it on their website?
On their website.
Like you put in your zip code or something and it?
They do it. Yep, you go on the website and just like she said, you put the zip code in a, you just put down the area and it pulls up everywhere. Newburyport, Swambskate, Marblehead, everybody's doing it. If you pull it up and you put in a, a zip code, you'll see it. Um, there is a ton, there's a ton.
That's great.
It was interesting just to see how many other towns were doing it. We honestly didn't know when we first kind of got into this, who was really.
And then my next, my twin sister's next door neighbor, she runs the Swambskate in the Beverly one and she didn't have cardboard. So I said, oh, you want cardboard? I ended up giving her, she wanted the go-kart, so, um, I said, how many do you need? So, and she, they ran it with twenty-eight, so I gave her twenty-eight, so at least they had twenty-eight to start out with, cause those were the best for the go-karts.
Those were great.
We had some boxes from moving, you know.
That was perfect.
So, really, everything, we, remember we were afraid we wouldn't have enough cardboard?
Yeah, because we saw it at her, her kid's school and we're like, oh, what can we do? Okay, we'll call the church, we'll get that. We're thinking and then we're like, cardboard. Yeah, that's what we said, can we use it? And they were like, they were bringing, the custodians were bringing it in, they were just throwing it in, get rid of it. And we're like, okay.
So the tools and everything that they sent you, like you had said that they give you the screwdrivers and all that, so what do you pack it up at the end and?
Well, there's a certain amount, there's a certain amount that, and that's the thing too, what made me nervous, being, you know, a teacher.
Yeah.
Is, you know, they gave us forty scissors, forty scissors had to go back, you know.
Oh, right, so you're like, nobody better take any scissors.
They, well, they, they didn't, but it's like keeping track of things, like, and there was only a little bit. It was like the tools and they had to be arranged a certain way and the goggles had to be arranged a certain, like, they tell you, it's a certain, but they, they tell you which box. Like, you know, the boxes that they came in, they told you exactly which box and what's going in that box and they gave you the slip, the packing slip. So you didn't pay for it. But like, I was having a heart attack, cause I, I emailed her and I said, I'm missing one. And I did, I was missing one pair of teacher's scissors and I'm like, I'm really sorry, I'll put in a pair of my scissors. And then I found it. So then I'm like, okay, I shipped my si- and I put a note on it, I shipped mine, but she's like, Heidi, it's okay, but I found, so I gave it back. Like, because you get stressed out about that, but, but, um, there's only a certain amount.
Over that we were, we could use for the maker space, you know, when we do find the right spot for that at Pembroke. They definitely have some materials that they allow, they allow us to keep that, you didn't have to send back.
Yeah, and that's what we gave to Julie.
Yep, so we have that.
That's great.
The other thing we did was, um, so the parents really liked that, we were taking so many pitches with the iPad, that the iPad's easy just to go email. Cause I clipped in everybody's email there, so when I went to a kid, it was like, cht, cht, and we just sent one. So the parents were getting a pitcher every day and we had thirty-six ki- thirty-three kids, so it was easy that everybody got a pitcher. Or everybody got two pitches a day, so they really liked that.
That's nice.
Yeah.
I love that, special touch. Because the parents were always interested, like when I go to Kiev and things like that, you always wanna.
Oh, they were like, oh, you're gonna keep them another week? No, I gotta go do the Pen Pearly Camp.
Yeah, the, the, I think with the, seeing the crowd of parents and families, extended family, like grandparents and aunts and uncles that showed up for the go-kart race.
Yes.
That was spectacular, there was a huge crowd and the cheering was unbelievable. And the kids made the, made the circles and tried to come about and, you know, wa- getting bombed by water balloons, it was.
Yeah, that, they had to put one kid in the cart and they had to make it from point here all the way around, like an obstacle course.
Obstacle course.
And then to the end, timed, and then you got so many points off. And, well, people were throwing water balloons, like the other team would throw water balloons at them, but it was hysterical. Yeah, and they all stayed, they, they basically stayed.
Yeah, and in the end, uh, the parents came inside and they toured, cause we put all of the things that they had made during that week on display. And, and they, you know, students demonstrated what they had done and it, it was just so wonderful at the end. The parents were just like, I cannot believe you did this much in a week, no wonder why they came home and they were absolutely exhausted. Didn't wanna play this game, you just wanted to lay on the couch, she was pooped, so, you know. That's, that's how you know they had an awesome time, is when they just come home and they're like tired.
And Camp Invention sent us, um, bags and they put these, um, like these light-up boards almost, like they used for the video game. They gave them a piece of it so they could go home and they wanted them to continue. So we actually put these goodie bags together that they give you because Camp Invention wants them. So that's what the giddy, goodie bag was at the end of the camp and it was great.
And did they give everybody T-shirts? I noticed some of the kids ran them.
Yeah.
Every kid got one, every child got one and, um, leaders got one. And CITs. Volunteers didn't get one, they were the only ones that didn't get them, cause they were doing the volunteer, but they gave them to you, yeah, and all the teachers. So.
I think it sounds great. Your enthusiasm.
It was really fun to see, it was really fun to see. I would always go down.
I see on the letterhead, Club Invention, is there an opportunity, I assume it's like the after-school version?
There is an after-school version.
Is that?
Yeah. That's something that we're talking about and looking at and.
Yeah, I've been trying to.
Financially, financially, we're trying to figure out how that would happen because Christine's program is so new, trying to figure out.
Christine does the STEM.
The STEM after-school, so a lot of this is obviously connected and we're trying to think of ways we can do things for older kids. Because you age out of this program and when you've had a lot of fun in it and you're an older student. Yeah, I think that you, you wanna continue being a participant, maybe not necessarily always a counselor in training. I mean, we have a lot of, you know, kids who are really creative, obviously, you saw that tonight. And I, I think it goes for the older kids as well, so.
Well, the high school kids were doing the challenges.
They were in it too.
They, they, they were helping the kids, but they were actually engaged in the challenges themselves, trying to figure it out.
They were such good sports, cause we actually had one, one where they had to get wet and the kids had to soak them. And we, they had to pick the, the, um, the counselor who's the wettest. It was so, they were such great sports, they would do anything, so it was really good.
They were great teachers too.
Yeah.
I mean, they had amazing ideas.
Yeah.
And just them themselves, seeing what the kids were doing and cht, 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 and how to settle it, well, let's hear your idea and let's hear your idea. It was like, oh my gosh, you're acting like us, you know, and, and they're only high school kids and they did that. And they could settle the problems without these two stepping in or myself stepping in, it was like, we're, you know.
Right, a great opportunity.
It was great for all.
I think it's great. Um, does anybody else wanna ask anything?
I, I do have one more.
Yeah.
Um, you mentioned financial, how does, how does, I assume the two forty-five goes to Camp Invention. Does anything, how does that work?
So they set up a pricing, an online pricing program, so you would pay online to, for your child to attend the camp. And then the Camp Invention people organize a pay scale and they pay the directors, the, and the people who run the program. So we don't really touch any of the money.
We do not.
No, we house it.
Right, you're providing, opening the doors and turning the lights on.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's a fair amount of, but it's a fair amount of money that.
Yeah.
It's def- I, I do, I mean, they worked so hard this year, I don't know if any amount of money was enough.
Was more of the work that they did, honestly.
Launched, yeah.
It's gonna be so much easier this year because we're like.
Oh, right.
Hey, we know this, girls.
You feel like, okay, all right.
Yeah, of course, so you have to have it a second year, there's no sense doing something once, because.
And did you see how cute those crickets are?
Those are very cute.
So funny.
And all the feedback I heard was absolutely positive, I mean, people, students that I knew who attended loved it.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything and the parents, that's, they had an opportunity to, you know, write me anything and daily and, and that was the thing. And at the end, we gave them a feedback sheet and, um, I didn't hear anything but praises, so I was psyched.
Yeah, that's good, right, that's great.
Yeah, it's always a good thing.
Well, um, I will make a motion to approve the operation of Camp Invention this summer, from June twenty-seventh to July first, two thousand and sixteen. As presented by all of these wonderful people, Dr. Julie Deroch and Heidi Beegan, Laura Seddon and Chris Fokini.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I think it's great, you did a great job.
And now we're gonna all work on the maker space. At Pembroke.
The fingers all go like this way.
All circles together.
They will love it, I tell you. Well, oh yeah, Julie's not getting away without working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And actually, we, we decided to have them on the agenda, like, within, like, four days ago. And they were like, oh, we'll, we'll come, we'll come, we'll come, so I do wanna thank them, they did not have much notice.
Okay, we have, um, Wes.
Yep, Wes is coming up next.
For the technology plan update.
Yeah, you've got a tough act tonight. It's all related, that's right.
And it was all related and it was all fantastic. I watched those, watched, I was across the hall from Camp Invention, so when I was there, it was very interesting. And I bought a big pile of cardboard on top of my roof, on my, on top of my roof, my car one day. Computers inside and cardboard on the roof, so they had plenty of cardboard.
Towers.
Had plenty to take apart, no, no question about it, I saved up a whole bunch for the take apart this year if they needed, so. Okay, uh, I guess this is for, uh, this year's, uh, how far we've gotten with technology. Um, it was a busy, busy summer and fall. Um, I, I'm not taking any credit for it, I had a lot of people helping me out and, uh, we got a lot done. There was a lot of work, there were some fits and starts in the fall for parent portal and stuff like that. But, uh, we're certainly continuing to move forward and, um, I think a lot of great changes have occurred in technology in the last six to eight months. And a lot more to come, so, um.
How's the feedback been for the new website?
It's been positive, it's been, it's, it's been, it's, it's very new.
Yeah, it looks good.
Michael did an incredible job with it and, um, we finally, we got Pembroke, Pembroke is on now. Uh, High School's been on, um, the only one we don't have a, a, a new site for, but we have their, their, their current site is, is Pearl, I think, is Pearl on the?
Well, the preschool has, Pearl has a website.
Yeah, was that, is that on the WordPress or is that on the?
No.
I didn't think so.
The preschool's still on Google sites.
Yes, on Google sites, yeah, so that's the only one has been, has been moved.
I go on the middle high school often in fifth grade.
Paul's done a great job with that, he's really, really jumped into it, really good, good and hard and he's, anything that anybody asks from him to do and show, he'll, he'll do. He's probably gonna end up being the expert of WordPress, I'm sure, cause he spends a lot of time on it.
Really, he's the media specialist at the middle high school, but he's really become part of the technology department. We've sort of, we've sort of encouraged him to join us, so he's working on some, some data stuff for us. He's taken on obviously the website, has done this, so he's, he's really, he's learning about Reddiker. So we can have sort of an internal expert, so he's really, he's really been a nice addition to the, to the group.
Yeah.
It's nice to be able to utilize people, you know, especially if they, they have interest in that, which he certainly seems to have.
He also took over, uh, taking care of the iPads at the high school as well. I gave him a, a management system to work with and he's been doing pushing the apps out and, and, uh, doing whatever teachers need to, to have added on to those. So he's done a real good job with that as well, so that's another positive turn, so, heck, moving forward with that as well, so.
So do you wanna just kinda walk through?
I wrote a bunch of stuff down here, I don't know if you have any questions on anything, um, solely, we can start at Pembroke, um. That was, that was a big project, I mean, we had everything in, in June and we really didn't have anything completely set up until two weeks ago. But when you look at it, we had, you know, we had thirty through, thirty through new laptops set up, forty-six, uh, workstations. The big one was five hundred and one iPads and we had, uh, Barry, Marion, Freyrell and myself, we just did those. We took them home on weekends to do twenty or forty at a time, cause it, we had to, we had to update every one of them to the new operating system. So it was an amazing task, but we got that done in less than two months, but that's a lot for five hundred and one, you know.
Yeah, between three people, yeah.
Yeah, and they're all out there, but every, every, uh, every fifth and sixth grade classroom has a cart. We have a cart for the first through, uh, yes, first, second, first through, second through third and kindergarten first. So we, we, we put two carts together of iPads as well as the, as the ones for the, for the one-to-one of the upper classrooms. And each, each, uh, teacher does have five iPads, they're starting to put whatever apps they wanna use with them and, and so on and so forth, so. And, uh, the other thing is, of course, is all the smart boards we put on, we have smart boards, interactive projectors. Next week, we're having the company come in, they're gonna do advanced training on those, cause they're, they are very new. Uh, we've done, Barry and I've done a pretty good job of showing people how to use them, but we're not experts and we're having some struggles with them. So they're coming in to help us out with that, uh, week after next. Um, so that's, that's another thing. We've also, well, during, during vacation last week, got all the Apple TVs in. So now, uh, teachers can use the IPTV system to project their iPads, their laptops. Show whatever movies they want that are on the, the channels that we have. And we're also using that system to display on the LCD screens, um, whatever the, the school wants to, uh, put in for announcements and the different displays. And that's working out very nicely.
So, um, I wish I'd taken pictures of this, but with the art teacher, a good example. So she had done this wonderful art project using tin cans, wasn't it, Margaret?
Yeah.
And, um, and so she had them displayed in those beautiful cases that are in the thing. But on that big projector, it actually, a PowerPoint was running, you know, explaining what the project was. And, uh, showing the process, showing the process along the way.
Students work too, which is really great, cause all students sat there watching their work come up.
And then the kids would look at the artwork, it was, it was a really.
That was really neat, that was, that was the first thing we did, was put that on there, that was part of our training session, was putting that PowerPoint on there. It was, it was a really good, good session, cause now students can see their work pop up and, and that's kinda nice. And we can display messages of what's coming up on the school and so on and so forth.
Did it based on, she took an artist and their work. Did it based on, she took an artist and their work and then she, she looked, taught the kids about the artist and, and they had a chance to explore the work. And then she had them create, you know, their own art in that, in that spirit. But what was nice was that screen really educated people who were watching it as to the, how it looked at different stages of the process. And obviously what the standards were that they're focusing. It was very, very impressive.
No, no doubt. Yeah. Um, infrastructure wise, uh, the wireless is, is all up and running, uh, throughout. We have one, uh, in every room. There's a a- access point, so we can run about seventy-five devices per room. There's a few areas that are a little sketchy because of, of the way the building is structured and the, the wireless doesn't quite reach through the walls too well. So we'll, we'll address that as we can. But for the most part, um, everybody's got access, uh, to the wireless.
So there are some rooms, the rooms.
Rooms. There are some areas, like some places in the office where you, you just can't go through the walls and from one office to the other. They have wired connections, but it's just, it's a tough building to put wireless in. I'm very glad I put one in every room, 'cause originally I wasn't going to, but somebody talked me into it and I did. And I'm glad I did, 'cause it was, it's interesting. You can go from one room to the other and not be able to reach it. If you're in the next room and there, without, there's no wireless in there, you wouldn't be able to reach it. So having one in every room allows the students to be able to attach, uh, no matter what they have.
What does an AP stand for?
Acc- access point.
Access point.
Yeah.
I asked that yesterday.
All the little geeky stuff, you know. Uh, we also did, uh, we also put all the copiers in and we centralized them. So that instead of having every teacher have a printer, we have a teach, uh, in the teacher room on every floor, there is a, a, a copier, printer, fax, scanner. Um, we have one, a color one, um, up in the special ed office, so if people need to do a, a colored picture or, or a colored print, they can do that without costing us a fortune. And we have one in, no, I said, yeah, library, kindergarten. Yeah. No, I don't think we have one in the library.
We had.
Yeah, we had to put that in the kindergarten room, so. But that's worked out very well. Nobody's had any real issues with it. We've been able to, uh, connect to it. And now we have the iPads, they can print to that as well. So, um, we're moving in good, good direction there.
From the old Pembroke where there was two.
Yeah. No doubt about it. And lots of, lots of little printers here. They're everywhere that causes all kinds of issues. Um, in the food service, we put the new, uh, POS system in. Um, Heather and I have been working on that since, uh, probably July. Um, we're, we're, we're moving along with it. We've had a few issues here and there with it, but for the most part, it's working as, as, as planned. We have a few things with support as far as payments not getting through to the server on time and that's something that's on there and that they've gone to figure out for us.
Do we see, um, I don't know if you'd be able to answer, but do we see the line moving, like quicker because of that, because of the point of sale?
I don't know. I should, I would, I can imagine not.
Think about that.
Do you think the process is, is quicker?
It's, it's probably quicker, it's still not.
Perfect, yeah, because it's new.
A lot more kids.
Yeah. So they have like a number system, like a card or whatever that?
No, the, um, the cashier pulls up the picture of the child on the screen and, um.
It's all automated.
Yeah.
Wow.
They, they have scanners, so eventually we should be able to use an ID card of some sort and scan it that way, but we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Yeah.
So.
My experience with those though is that the younger kids, that doesn't work any better, because then they can't remember their number, they can't remember their card. I have seen places where they actually have those, um, I think about the, the, the cards where you put the alphabets in it, like a teacher in a lower primary. And they, like, they go walk in and their, their little cards are there and the child comes in, grabs their card and then puts their card back in, but it's.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out. But it's, it's in place.
Well, the fact that there's a POS system at the elementary school is exciting.
Exactly.
It is, yes.
And actually, this, just to say, this is the same system that's at the high school too, right?
Yes, we're all applying the same system. It's all, it all writes back to the server. It's actually loaded, looking at Pembroke.
Parent has like a, if, if I had a child at Pembroke and like, you know.
You can see both accounts.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
It all goes in the central, central database and it's there, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah. So, um, the, the library software, we, we, we had a very, very old version at Pembroke. And we also had a, we had, well, we had a better version at the high school. Last spring, the folks at Follett Systems, uh, gave me an amazing quote, uh, to move both systems into the cloud. And so we did that this, uh, this fall quietly. And, uh, now the library can be reached from, uh, anywhere at any time. If a, a parent needs to look at what books the kids have out, they can look them up. They can search both catalogs, see if there's anything, any, any certain literature that they may need or want for their child. Um, it's really a nice system. Works really, really well. And I got two very happy media center people.
And how would a parent access the system?
There, you know what? We gotta put that on the website, 'cause there should be a link for it. We, I'll, I'll make sure that that happens. Yeah. 'Cause that's, 'cause anybody can reach it. I'll put a link on both, uh, webpages in the district one. Um, oh, bandwidth, uh, we have, I was able to get, uh, the hundred fifty megabytes per second, uh, internet connection, fiber optic to both schools. Um, that was a bit of a struggle with Verizon over the summer, even though what they're building is just don't throw away from the high school. But they finally came through for us, so, uh, both schools now have a, have a fiber optic and the VPN between the high school and Pembroke is on that fiber optic. So it's much faster than it was before.
Yeah.
And a lot more stable, which is good. Um, Marion Fravell, a couple of weeks ago, did, uh, the Hour of Code. Um, she took that project on and the kids had a blast. They were doing, they were learning, uh, programming logic. Um, from, I think it was from first grade right on through to sixth, so. She was doing, she did an excellent job, so kudos to her on that one. She did a fabulous job getting that put together.
And we will have Liz and, um, Mary Ann come.
Yeah, 'cause they're doing a lot of new stuff.
What they're doing in particular. And Liz will bring some of her students that, um, you know, have been working on it as well.
Yeah, Peter did a lot with moving that curriculum, so if there's robotics, there's programming, there's all kinds of stuff going on it. That's high, high level at the high school. So that, that's very, very good. High school, a lot of redundant stuff here, a lot of their software, the, uh, bandwidth, the QTEC, the GTEC, my QTEC, I always do that. It's GTEC. Uh, the GTEC program is the, uh, one that Mary Lyon has launched this year as a, as a, as an independent study program where students, uh, get interviewed to, uh, see what their technology level is and they, uh, now are doing tech support for us. And our department is, is supporting it as best we can to throw, uh, whatever items we can their way, so they can, uh, start working on doing some of the stuff in tech support. And that's been working out very nice.
That's a great idea. How many kids are involved in that?
I think there's four or six, something like that, yeah.
That's great.
And is that like a course they take?
It's a, it's a course they take. It's an independent study. They get credit for it and they, during the period they have, they do it. They, they, we have, we're creating a spot in the media center for them to, so they have a station to be at, so people can find them. And they've been doing the, the tech support as people have asked them to. So, and they've, they've done a very well, very good job so far. It's, it's new, so there's little, little bumps in the road here, but we'll, we'll get it smoothed out and, uh, and working quite fine.
And if there was a time when they didn't have anything to work on?
There are projects for them. We, Mary, Mary's make sure they have projects, as they do. Next, next semester, I wanna build them some sort of machine so they can package with different types of software, so they can learn different operating systems, like Linux and, and, uh, different versions of Windows and stuff, so.
Might they learn coding in that period?
I, they could if they want to. I mean, it's an independent study, so if they wanna go and do some coding, they certainly could. There's no reason why they couldn't.
Technology classes more than that.
Yeah. But they certainly could, 'cause it is an exploratory, when you do an independent project, it's an exploratory. You can, if you, if, if the instructor is okay with what you're doing and you have a project that you can do, it involves coding. That's no, there's no reason why that couldn't be done. 'Cause a lot of scripting that can be done, that's tech support, that'd be tech support type, uh, scripting that can be done, so, certainly. Um, also with the construction, we did, uh, we did quite a bit of good stuff with the infrastructure at the high school. It's not perfect. We have all new switches in there now. We're ready for, for adding our, our, our newer wireless, so that we can, uh, uh, better su- support our, uh, our, uh, infrastructure. Um, we have some issues with wiring that's still not labeled. We'll, we'll try and work on that as a project sometime, hopefully during the summer. But, um, it really has greatly been, greatly neaten up. All the, all the, uh, switches are all brand new. We got a ten gigabit background like Pembroke School at the high school as well, so our infrastructure really, uh, is taking quite a good shape, uh, in the last couple of months. So we're, uh, getting, moving quite, quite fast along on that. Um, so that's in, in good shape. Down at Pearl, uh, we've taken some of the access points that we had at the old Pembroke School. We spread them out through, uh, Pearlies. And now Pearl is pretty much all wireless now as well. There's not too many spots that, that you can't reach a, a wireless access point. Um, throughout the whole school system, we now have a new phone system, so now everybody has a phone on their desk. Um, it's a modern phone system. It is what the, uh, town will hopefully eventually get, so we'll be able to dial building to building without it.
Just like a three-digit extension?
Yeah, it'll be four-digit extension and we're, we're trying to keep it, the same company doing all of it, so we, so the extensions just keep getting added to it, so they're not.
So that would be townwide?
Yeah.
So that would be like to the police fire, town hall?
Yeah, we started that conversation early and.
Last fall.
Been able to, we've been able to do our, first it was, we have to make sure what we're doing at Pembroke, we are doing everywhere else. And it was very tricky with the timing.
Yeah.
'Cause there were a lot of tricks to the timing. And then we met with Red Kelly and the discussion was, how can we make sure that what we're buying interfaces with what the town wants to buy? So we've been doing a lot of those kinda connections.
Kind of collaboration with the town, yeah.
And, and how many districts do have that capability? Is that like, just, is that the, the, is that what we strive for? That it would be a necessity to all, um, you know?
It usually comes from the city or town.
Yeah.
It's usually the other way around. We're, we're driving.
Okay.
That, those conversations.
Yeah.
And it is, it's usually the city or town.
Yeah, and we drive, we do it the opposite way, but it just makes sense for us to collaborate with the town. It's, it's a small town. It, it, it's, it's much easier for us to deal with it than, than a bigger town.
So what's the timeframe like for that to happen, for it to, to be, um?
Now, it's a town, it's a Georgetown's.
Yes, in their hands.
Now, they're the next ones to have to get that project done. Same thing with the wireless. We're gonna use the same wireless access points there as they're gonna use here.
Is it costly for the town to do that?
Oh, what, to do the phones?
Yeah.
They have, they have a budget already, they have a budget already put together from.
Than it costs for us.
Yeah, and they did it, they did a budget last, two years ago.
Capital project.
Yeah, capital project. They still have that money available, so they can still do it.
Like eighty-eight thousand dollars available, yeah. So Wes, there's a few things you didn't put on this list.
Did I miss something?
So do you wanna talk about the ticket system?
Oh, that was a, my last page didn't make it, so that was okay. That was on the last page.
Okay.
Um, I have instituted a new ticket system. Um, it's extremely simple for teachers to use. They put their email address in, tell us what the problem is. The ticket comes to me. I assign it to a, to a tech or, or to myself and it gets done. What's hap- and every time something happens, if we, if we, if we update the ticket, if we, if we communicate back and forth between texts, the person who initiated the ticket gets a response. They know what's going on. They know when the ticket's been resolved, what pro- what part of the process the ticket is in. And, uh, we've done it for like, has it been two weeks? About two weeks. And it's worked very, very, very well. I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased with it.
Because there was so much, I mean, it's just efficient to do it anyway. We've done that with maintenance and it's ma- it made a huge difference. But, you know, there was so much going on and there were so many needs people had, and then there was a level of frustration, because as hard as people were working, things just couldn't all get done in the timeframe that, and, and people weren't even knowing we were working on it, because everybody was so busy, they didn't have time to say, I, I'm on this. So, you know, we, we talked about doing, um, the same system that we use for, um, the maintenance, which is called School Dude. Um, Wes had some experience with School Dude and, and previously and said, yeah, I, I don't really love the interface. I think it's more complicated for the teachers. I'm not sure they'll actually use it. So he did some homework and some research and found this free.
Yeah, fresh, fresh desk.
Free as good.
And it, and it.
It is for the, for what we have.
He introduced it to the administrators, right, and everybody said, yeah, let's, let's try it and let's go forward. And the feedback we've gotten is positive. And it just makes people feel that much better when you say something needs to be done and then you immediately get an email saying, we got it.
And we assign two.
Is that like an automatic?
Yes, it's all automatic.
Everything's automatic. Soon as they put a ticket in, I receive an email saying, I have a ticket.
Okay.
I'll go in and see what the ticket is. They, they put their name, their, uh, their room number, the school, the room number, so I know exactly where they are. I assign it to whichever tech would, would handle it. If it's something I handle, I, I put myself on it. But if it's to a high school, Kyle will do it. If it's Pembroke, then, then, then I assign it to Barry. That person who initiated the ticket will now get an email saying Barry has been assigned to this ticket. And every time Barry and I communicate back and forth and where, what, what he needs for help, where we're going with it, that person gets another update and they know what's going on all, all the whole time. When it's closed, they get an email saying, this ticket is closed. If you don't feel this ticket should be closed, please respond net, within forty-eight hours and we'll reopen the ticket. So if somebody responded, somebody had done that already, responded once, there was a ticket that was closed, they, it was an addition, it wasn't part of the same ticket, but that's fine. It got back to me that they wanted the, the ticket reopened again. I reopened the ticket. We can, we fixed the last piece of the part that they, they'd put in that second, um, email to us and that got done and closed again. So it's worked very well.
So if we use School Dude though for that, that wouldn't have cost any more money. I know we use School Dude for maintenance.
Uh, sixteen hundred dollars a year more.
Oh, it would, it would have been additional.
Right, 'cause we have the IT Direct, but with the IT Direct was mostly managing inventory. So we do pay for a piece.
And the town uses, um, a similar to, to School Dude.
They use IT Direct.
No, the, I thought they did.
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know if they use.
But, but, you know, we, we wanted it to be something that we, people could use.
It has to be simple.
It's pretty, it's pretty easy and simple.
Are you able to track sort of categories of, of help requests, you know, to, hey, we're getting a lot of wireless access problems? Or we're getting a lot of?
I, I can generate reports and filter them to, to what type of affair it was, 'cause there's a, there's a dropdown, they can, they can put certain things into. Most of them don't. They just tell me what the issue is and send it on, so, which is fine. That's, that's fine. But I can categorize it afterwards. And then I can run a report to categorize, uh, you know, things like that. 'Cause you're right, that's one of the reasons for putting a ticket system. If something's reoccurring over and over again, it's something we know we have to do a big, uh, scale fix on.
Another major project that Wes has, has been working on has been working with the Reddicker database. And like Peter did, Yeoman's work with the parent portal this year. Real shout out on that. Um, you know, so a lot of those, you know, Reddicker, Reddicker is a database. Reddicker's a database, but we had a lot of other things that were, like, didn't, they, it's not an integrated system. Like, you know, there's, there's certain integrated systems where everything is just in one place. Reddicker isn't that. So what we've been doing is, any decisions we're making, we're making that, try to build on one database and try to interface with the Reddicker database. You know, the food service database was different than, than integrated with, so, with, with Reddicker in the past, so you'd have errors, right? So this, everything we're trying to do is now streamlined. But that, you know, just getting the actual, making sure everybody's entering the data the same way, in the same fields, that, that work really has needed to be done. And that's why we brought Paul into it too, um, because Wes is doing state reporting, but that's a lot of, that, Mary Ellen used to do that part-time, right? Wes has many other tasks and, and challenges, so we're, we're really working on, you know.
Who was that, Mary Ellen?
Mary Ellen Cronin.
Yeah, she was doing.
She was fantastic.
She did a great job in the state database, yeah.
So, you know, a lot of this stuff is the first time through too. So we, you know, we know that we have to, we have to make sure the secretaries, the Pembroke secretaries didn't know anything about Reddicker. They had never done anything with it. Now we're training people in the scheduling software. So it, when Wes says it was bumpy, there were a, a number of bumps, um, in that area just because there was a lot of new stuff all at one time.
Yeah, we, we moved from three, three different servers in three different locations to one location on the, in the cloud with Reddicker. So the database now is all, all one spot. So people that need to look at different schools can just log into one area, get into the data, look at the different school information they need to look at and, and, and move forward. Where before, they'd have to go physically to the school to reach, reach the, reach the data. So now that we have that together, now we can start moving the data around, so it, it works, so each school has their own data and it's updated and consistent with each school. Once we have that done, then we can start getting SIF compliant with the state of Massachusetts, so they can start moving that data quickly and easily from our database to theirs. Uh, and have an easier time with the errors. Right now, a lot of this is handwork. Um, I didn't realize how much handwork it was until I did it the summer the first time. And it is a lot of handwork and a lot of corrections that have to be done, because, only because of where you have to pull it from, three different locations. And there's some things that aren't in there. We don't have grading and, and courses into Pembroke School yet. We'll be doing that, uh, training soon and having, uh, courses and, and students schedule into those courses in every school.
So we're having webinars for the high-end users that are, that are being scheduled. And the good thing is that a lot of our staff is, we have some high-end users, like Katie Legere, I would wanna mention her. Um, Katie does, does a lot of work, knowing that she knows the Reddicker software, particularly the attendance. Sandra knows it. And people have been just so willing to say, oh, I'll go over and sit with Diane, you know, or, or Janine and, and, uh, help them with that, so. And, you know, so it's really been.
It's been a good team effort.
Great, a great team effort.
Good to hear.
We are buying new software for our bus routing. Pam had put us on to Versatran. When, uh, will I let you explain, Joan, how you got to where you got to?
So I had gotten the information from Pam and Carol, so we contacted the rep from Tyler Technologies, which is the same company that owns Munis. And Barry and Wes and I, um, did, uh, it wasn't really a webinar, the, the sales rep, rep, you know.
Talked us through it.
Yeah, presented it and, um, actually went on the live website and, you know, went to the Pembroke School and told us how they build routes and everything. And then so, um, Barry and, and Barry especially liked it, um, 'cause it could do a lot more than TransFinder could do. And the annual cost was very similar. Um, we will have to pay an upfront cost, although I'm still negotiating with them after today. But, um, you know, it, it, I guess because it's in the cloud, the, um, bus company can have access to it. This, for me, because there's so many. This, for me, because there's so many people that come in over the summer, I was constantly, Barry doesn't work in the summer, so I was constantly like sending Barry emails because people wanna know, they knew the town, do I get a bus? I don't know, I don't really know anything, you know, about any of the routes. So all the secretaries will be able to have access to it, so you can look up somebody's address and see if they're entitled to a bus, and, um, Barry was very happy with it. He was the one that had to be sold on it, and he was very much sold on it, so. And when we found out the price was, um, a little bit less actually annually than what we pay, you know, so I'll, next meeting.
For more capacity.
They, we have to sign a three-year contract, um, so, uh, we didn't wanna wait, we were originally gonna wait till July first implement, but Barry thought that won't go well.
We have to change the, what we learned about the parent portal is.
Yeah, 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 you gotta, you have.
You gotta, you wanna do it soon enough, because when you go to do those routes, you wanna have all the data, and you wanna make sure it's been scrubbed.
And you've had a chance to work with it a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, the, the nice thing about this is it, it, it works with Reddicker. So they're gonna be able to, I don't know, Wes will have to do his magic, but be able to pull the, the students out of Reddicker right into this, uh, database, so, um.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so I'll be, um, coming to the next school committee meeting with the three-year, um, contract that you'll have to approve as a committee.
And like you mentioned yesterday, so thank you Pam for bringing that to our attention. But as you mentioned yesterday, that particular software that we're going with is, is great for small districts like ours.
Right, so the, the Versatran that you had sent me, um, I don't know if there was a, kind of a miscommunication when you talked to Chris from Tyler, but he says, well, all right, let's start with how big is your school district? And I said, oh, it's fifteen, sixteen hundred kids. Oh, I think Versatran's too big for you. And I said, okay, and then.
We had that conversation too, right, I, I know there's a separate, there's a different product.
Well, and this is a new product.
Yeah.
This is fairly new, like a year old, maybe?
Versa something.
Yeah. Trans, trans, Transversa?
Yeah, it's just a little, little diff- little different name. Very similar.
So, yeah, so I'm, I'm so happy that you got that, and Barry, you know, I think Barry in the beginning was like, I like Transfinder. I'm comfortable with Transfinders.
That's why we did it together, and then also on that same li- alignment track, is, um, we love Connected. Um, we clearly need to continue with a notification system, 'cause it works beautifully. But there is one that lines up with Reddicker. So we're looking at it, and if it, if it allows us to do the same functions, and allows us to work off of one database instead of multiple databases, 'cause that's the problem right now. We have a different database for Connected, so there's a bus issue. Uh-oh, now we, we can't just go to the database, we have to go figure out the, where the data is, and what if kids aren't in it? Right, the parents didn't sign up for Connected, but, you know, their kid's on the bus, and how do you get to them? So we just, we just feel like the best, we don't think it'll be a problem at all for parents to make the adjustments, 'cause it won't be different in their end.
Yeah.
But we feel that this whole, getting that data clean and loaded right, and then having everything interface off of one database is gonna make this a lot.
So you're in the process now of, of looking into that?
I'm reviewing it, I wanna make sure, I wanna, I've been, I've been with Connected for a long time, mother dis- mother two districts have, were using it for years and using it. In fact, I, when I first time I got into it, it was a first-year Connect that it even was in existence. And they, they're very good at what they do, they're very expensive, there's no question about that. So I wanna see, as long as, as long as the new, the system that Reddicker has, has the same features, I don't see it's gonna be a big issue.
Peter, you looked at that system too, didn't you?
You used it for a while, didn't you?
Didn't someone contact you, uh, about this other, this other system? And, and you were the one that brought it to our attention, that we should take a look at it. And I think when we looked at the cost, it actually cost less per student, and it would allow us to work off the same, but the same thing. We're not changing it until we know that everything is gonna work, so it's gonna be turnkey. And then I think the last thing Wes, that you might wanna talk about is just the status of briefly where we are in looking at the technology situation for next year, starting with the fact that we're gonna go to New York.
Yeah, we're going to New York in the end of January to Apple, and I, I've been looking at different ways of trying to provide a one-to-one program for the high school. Um, there's, there's three different scenarios I'm working on. There's the Cadillac version, which is, um, an iPad in the hands of every student, um, within a lease situation where parents pay X amount of dollars per month for, for the, for the lease, which is, which I'm trying to roll into a whole program where the iPad, the case, the management system, and the professional development is all rolled into that, into that lease, so we can, we can do it in an affordable manner. Um, another way of doing it would be for us to do a, uh, there's companies that will actually provide a place for parents to purchase an iPad outright with all those same components, except the professional development and management system. But they, they have a way of doing it so that parents can buy either directly right away, or through a lease, or whatever, and there's no, um, we, the school and district have absolutely no cost involved at all, we wouldn't have to even sign a lease for them. So that's one way, I've got somebody giving me a quote for that. Uh, the other way is a hundred percent BYOD, where we just say, bring your device, and we'll support the device, um, through our wireless system. That's a little more difficult to, uh, to configure, because we just don't.
Control it.
You can't control it, we have no control over it, we can't use apps. Um, there's, there's a, there's a, it's a lot more difficult to do, so that's my third case scenario if we have to go that route.
I know, the only thing with, that I have the concern with is that so many kids have their own device.
Yeah.
And they are, I mean, I, you know, my kids have the Macs, and it's, it is crazy for a parent to think, okay, I have this great computer, and my kid is familiar with it, now I'm gonna be told that I need to, you know, if we went that way, that, you know, to go to an iPad, so.
Well, and, and, and there can be a balance, right? That's one of the things, like, so for example, if you have your own and it fits certain specifications, maybe you bring it. And then if you don't, and you want to get into this lease program, that's an option too.
Yeah.
So that's, we're trying to figure out what all the options might be.
Yeah.
Right, so I wanted Wes to mention it, because we'll come back again to you when we have, after we go to New York, and when we have, when we have a plan, because we, we, if we're gonna ask, if we're gonna try to do this starting in September, we have to be starting to talk with families.
Yeah.
Sort of now, right? So that's the, we're gonna take this trip to New York, we're gonna work with the Apple representatives, we're gonna, you know, figure out how this strategic plan fits into our strategic plan, then we're gonna try to figure out what are the options we might wanna consider, and then how do we, how do we roll it out and, and make sure that, you know, parents understand, you know, what they're getting from it. And then, of course, we also, and this is something that we've been talking with Julie about, 'cause there's already been quite a bit of professional development, but teachers are definitely asking for more. Apple's been doing some PD, we've got some high-end users doing PD.
Yeah.
Um, but if we're gonna really give teachers, you know, the tools to do this, we, we owe them the opportunity to get support both through, you know, trainings on particular topic or application, and then on the job support. If I'm working with it and I'm struggling with it, I don't really know what to do, who, who do I go to? How, how am I going to, to do that?
Is there some iPad training tomorrow?
Uh, uh, yes, there is at the middle high school.
Yeah, we're doing, no, we're doing, uh, Google, uh, applications tomorrow.
Doing Googles tomorrow.
So what's in New York?
Oh, so in New York, Julie and Peter, Ju- Julie and Peter, do you wanna talk about, um, how the New York thing came about?
Um, we, Julie and I met with the representatives from Apple, and they suggested that we put a team together and come to Cupertino, but we said that. So, uh, New York was the new start, and, uh,
Petri, Peter.
They, they wanted us there with all of their resources and to visit model schools in the city. So, um.
But don't we have model cities within Massachusetts?
Yes, but this is all on Apple's car, at our, Apple's.
No, what I'm saying is, no, I understand that, but I mean, we have the same thing in Massachusetts that, there are plenty of.
Yep, we've been to Burlington, we would definitely plan to visit other schools that, this was, they, their headquarters is in New York, and they wanted us to come to their headquarters and work with their people. It was kinda self-serving on their part, I think, too, but there.
Well, that, that was what I was gonna ask, so with these three options that you have, and obviously this, this trip to New York, they have in mind what they would like.
Of course they would.
Right, so what, what, what will they be selling us? What do you think their?
Well, Peter, you had the conversation with them, so what?
Would make the most sense.
They'll be, they'll be selling the Cadillac version.
The Cadillac version, so the iPad for everyone on a lease basis.
One-to-one, right?
Insurance.
Well, they, they don't really care how you pay for the iPads.
Yeah, as long as.
Yeah, as long as it's iPads, yeah.
Yeah, they don't care if the district paid for it, or parents paid for it, or a combination, or anything like that. They just feel strongly, and, and I would say that, that we do too, that the iPad is the device that we want. So it's going to be very different, a very different program if everyone has a different device.
Yeah, it would be very different and difficult.
But Peter, could you imagine, not necessarily any device people wanna bring in, but like if Barb, if they have.
What about iPads? Like, I have an iPad from last year.
An iPad, or if they have a, an Apple, uh, you know, a iMac, or iMac Book Pro, or something.
Well, we chose, we chose the iPad because of the apps
Yes, right.
That it has. Um, and it, it has a lot more, uh, it's really geared for education, and, uh, there's a lot more support than, um, the Android market. And, uh, the iPad, I think a lot of people don't realize that the apps you can get on, on a, a Mac are not the same as you can get on an iPad. There are many, many, many more on the iPad.
There's just million, literally millions of, of apps for the iPad, half of those are for education, and the other ones are less.
This is the kinda stuff we're gonna be talking about, right? So when we try to figure out, well, what will we come before the committee and recommend? We also have to look at, you know, what the funding looks like, you know? So do we, do we, what, you know, we have some things that'll come off leases in the next couple of years? Do we, do we maintain that lease money in the budget and then put these things on the lease? So there's a lot of discussion and decisions that need to be made, but I just wanted Wes to, you know, Michael is actually on our team, so Michael's gonna be going with us, they, they recommended having school committee members.
I didn't know about the Cupertino part.
He would've held out a little longer.
Well, actually, you know what, after we spoke with them a while, they thought, they think that New York is better because the model schools in California are so far away from Cupertino, and, uh, the ones that we, uh, they want us to see are in the city.
I thought we were going to the Bahamas.
I, I hope they take you out to a nice restaurant dinner or something.
Wendy's.
Yeah, they're paying for the hotel and meals, and, you know.
Hotel meals, yeah, they treat you well.
We do have to get ourselves there.
And surprisingly, they're trying to sell us.
But it, but that's on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, so I look forward to hearing how that trip goes.
And, and it'll be interesting.
Conversely, we have to convince them of the benefits of giving us all the support that we could possibly want or need.
They're very into giving us the support, for free, no, but.
The training that they've provided, has that been good, the training?
Yes, we, uh, we did get training through the, the Pembroke School, um, that we're trying to set up for the spring for teachers. Um, but when we go to meet with them, that's one of the questions I have. What, how, how would you organize a plan around that over time? What would it look like over the first year versus the second or third year? Because building in something like this does take a lot of teacher training, and we have to be, really be aware that we have some high-end users, but then we have people who really haven't thought about this yet.
Exactly.
How couldn't this work for them in the classroom? So they'll be bringing in, um, their literacy and their math people to talk with us. They'll be, like, we were able to kind of think about things, how we wanted to use, um, apps across high school versus elementary school. So I think that they'll talk to us about all of that and show, and really show it to us, and it'll give us a better perspective of,
Yeah.
of how to do this or how to think about it. And then they said they would also help us build a strategic plan around it, which is what I was really excited about, because I do think it's a lot of moving parts, and so how do you bring all that together is gonna be important to hear about, so.
Well, it'd be great to actually go into a school and see.
Yeah, especially their model school, yeah.
How they utilize them, and yeah, I think, I think it's a great opportunity, it's just gonna be interesting to hear the feedback that you guys have when you're done. Well, that's good.
I didn't have anything more on my list.
Yeah, it was on my first page.
But I do, I do wanna just, you know, Wes and the technology staff, and Peter, and Margaret, and Julie, and everyone that has really, you know, stepped up and come together, you know, it, it, it isn't many, one person cannot do it, you know, alone. But, you know, Mary Ann and Barry, you know, when we, there were things that we needed, or Liz Marcati, and, you know, anybody, I could name a lot of people.
Yeah, you could, yeah.
And, uh, Katie, I mean Rudy, I mean, it's Diane, uh, it's really been.
Stop saying people, because if you miss one person, you're gonna die.
If I miss one, I'm so sorry.
Call it a team, well, call it a team effort, because it was, it's truly a team effort.
You know, and there was frustration, no doubt about it, but people worked through it and, and stuck with it, and, you know, I think now, you know, we're, we're moving along in a, in a good place, and, uh, the school's a much better technology-wise.
This was gonna go, I mean, a brand-new school.
I didn't.
No, I, I, I don't think anybody expected that it was gonna be perfect.
But then, you know, when things pop up, and there were things in the building project that didn't quite go, and there were the timing of some things, you know, once something is delayed, then, then everything's delayed,
Everything is delayed, yeah.
And, you know, then, of course, school opens and you, you need it now, and.
Those people, people start plugging things in and turning things on, next thing you know, didn't think of that.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I, I think all things considered, you know, like I said, it, it wasn't just, we got a new computer system. It was a lot of moving parts.
A lot of things went at once.
Um, and as you know, we have a very ambitious technology plan too, so, you know, I, I think it was helpful to, to have Wes do an update on what's been done, and then come back at the end of the year and do a, a, another summary. We'll go right through the strategic plan and those three major areas, and, and, uh, give you a comprehensive look at the, the year.
Definitely.
Well, it's interesting for me to see all that's been done,
Right.
and to think back just a year, the antiquated systems at the old Pembroke. Yeah.
I'm just like.
Yeah, you got, you got that.
Indefinitely related to it.
This project is definitely kicked into, into high gear, um, the, the opportunities that are available.
Yeah.
Just, we were just talking and looking at the Level Four things when we were at the grade level meetings. You know, it's great to see the teachers talking about, oh, you know, I, this, this child could use the Mobi Max as a, as a way to do reinforcement for, you know, so, you know, those kinda things, we would never even think of putting kids on, in a group with a technology device in the past. But it, it just opens doors, and you see what it does to kids, how excited they get about the opportunity to, to maybe do it a different way. So it's been, it's been, um, it's been work, and thank you Wes for, for all that you've done, and everyone that's supported you and helped you, because it has been a team effort.
Yeah, no question.
I appreciate you coming to, talking to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks Wes.
Thank you.
And, and did you notice all the articles that we had?
Yeah, I did, especially when they were double-sided.
Weren't they great? Yeah, weren't they great?
Good.
Yeah, but I, I liked the ins and outs one for, did you see that one? George Shansins and Outs for two thousand fifteen.
Pembroke is in.
Pembroke's in, yeah.
Yeah, I did like that.
Those very, uh, you know, just the, the cheerleaders and the efforts they've been making. And then the active shooter situation, that Alice training tomorrow, tomorrow, the Pembroke staff is having Alice training, um, a part of the Alice training, we have, we had to break it into two parts, 'cause we couldn't get the four hours into one day. So we're doing the first part tomorrow, and then the second part, we're still working with the union on it, but we're hoping to have it done in February, and then, um, middle high school's gonna be done in April. And that will do in one day, that's the plan anyway for now.
That's good.
So it's exciting, and then we'll have the parent meeting coming, which Derek is going to, uh, what, was that the, I wanna say, I've got so many dates in my head, I thought that was the twentieth.
The twentieth is the accountability?
Oh, the tw- okay, then it's the twenty-seventh, it's the twenty-seventh.
It is.
Yep. So we encourage.
And, and are we, have we advertised that?
Yeah, um, well, it's in, it was in the article in the paper, and I'll put it on the blog, and we'll put it up on the website.
Okay.
And then we'll put it on the little screen that, at the TV, this TV screen.
Yep.
Laura usually puts, puts it out there, and then the paper's usually very gracious about putting it in that page with all the little, little blurbs of, Laura usually puts, puts it out there and then the paper's usually very gracious about putting it in that page with all the little, little blurbs of. So, yeah, we, we definitely, and I think probably Margaret will let it in her week, what do you call it, your week, this week? Yeah, and Peter will put it on the morning announcement, so.
And what about the parent, uh, form for the accountability?
We'll do the same, we'll do the same thing, yeah.
Same thing for that? And what about like a connect ed or?
Well, we'll, yep, I just did a connect ed, cause there was a piece to firm it.
Yeah, we got it tonight, yes.
So, yes, I, I will do it.
I'm glad that you did that, because of course, the kids came home, you know, telling us and the information that I got was that it was in Georgetown and then your, your
Yeah. No, no, yeah.
So it definitely clarified it and I talked to my children about it, because they were a little
Yes, they were nervous, yeah.
concerned, so I said, it wasn't in Georgetown.
No.
You know, so they're like, well, then why are we talking about it? I'm like, because we have to.
Because, just in case. Well, I, and, well, I thought it was also a good opportunity, just that one more conversation about, you know, if you were in that situation, what would you do? Right, with, with, you know.
These cold days, if someone's asking you to get in town, you never know, it's, you know, it's, it's always good to reinforce that.
Reinforce, yeah. So that is happening tomorrow, so excited about that.
Well, so thanks for sending out that connect ed.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Um, I do, I, I, there was, um, it's not in here, but I do want to take a vote for Heidi Monjo to be on the
Oh.
Start School Later Committee, because we took a vote for all the other members and then she just recently, uh, joined the committee.
Oh, okay.
So I do just wanna, at this point, just, uh, while it's on my mind, to just make a motion to, um, include Heidi Monjo on the Start School Later Ad Hoc Committee.
So moved.
Great.
Second.
Discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
Barbie, well, you're talking about that, do you want, on a regular basis, do you want us to add under subcommittee reports, Start School Later?
Yeah, we probably should.
Yeah, we can just, and then if there's an update, you could give that. Okay, I'll just, I'll ask Laura to try to remember to do that.
Okay. Uh, there were a lot of donations.
Yes.
The EthnoFinancial. So, yeah, I noticed that there were a lot of, um, donations, which is always nice to see, again, just a, um, example of how generous our community is. Um, the girls soccer parents donated what they had left over from their banquet, um, to the soccer program. So I will make a motion to accept the forty-dollar donation from girls soccer parents for the soccer program with much gratitude.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, a treadmill was donated, which was very nice. Phil Desalas, varsity baseball coach, donated a treadmill to the workout room at the high school, which is great. Um, so.
Was there a, was there a treadmill in there, Peter?
There was, a very old one.
Was there a treadmill in the room, in the training, the workout room?
Yeah.
So this is the second one?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Or did you get rid of the old one?
Might be a couple, it, it might be more than two. We, I just signed a P O for, to fix a bunch of them.
Oh, okay.
There's some ellipticals and.
Okay.
Yeah, they, I mean, they were, they're old, the machines, but they, they still work.
Yeah, is there a television in there?
No.
Which most take focus.
We're a little too on TV at the high school.
That's a sore subject.
I'm sorry. Um, so I will make a motion to accept the, um, donated treadmill from Phil Des- Delas- Desalas. Sorry, I apologize, um, which he has donated to the workout room at the high school with sincerest gratitude.
So moved, second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, a technology donation from the P T A, which was very generous, six thousand dollars to the middle high school for the purchase of thirty-nine Apple TVs and related cables. That was very, um, kind of them for that.
Yes, that's a great donation.
So I will make a motion to accept the six thousand dollar donation from the Georgetown P T A for the purchase of thirty-nine Apple TVs and cables as presented.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we had a family donation, um, the Greenfield family, uh, graciously donated three thousand dollars to the Georgetown Middle School for the purchase of TVs and related cables. I wanna thank them for that.
Wow.
Uh, that's very kind and generous of them, so I will make a motion to accept the three thousand dollar, dollar donation from the Greenfield family for the purchase of TVs and cables with gratitude.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's wonderful, very nice. Um, Melanoma Foundation of New England donated six hundred dollars to be split between three Georgetown public school departments, the student council and both the boys and girls cross-country teams.
Lacrosse.
Lacrosse.
She, what, what does it say? She, Laura has lacrosse.
Oh, did I say lacrosse? Why did I say cross-country? That must be my hit, my hit, okay, lacrosse team and the girls lacrosse.
You said cross-country.
Lacrosse.
Okay, so the boys and the girls lacrosse team. That's very generous, so I will make a motion to accept six hundred dollar donation from the Melanoma Foundation of New England to be split evenly between the Georgetown Middle High School Council.
It is cross-country.
It does, yeah.
Oh, well, why does it say lacrosse?
Oh, yeah, it does say. But on this, but on this cross. But on the form, it says cross-country. Oh, there you go.
Oh, so it is cross-country on that one and then, okay, so.
Yep, yes, yes. So when Laura wrote that up, she must've got the wrong word.
The boys cross-country and the girls cross-country team with gratitude.
It was, it was via the, um, the race, it says team race at the Mike Donahue, Donahue race, so it has to do with that.
Yes.
And the cross, and the cross, yeah, it wouldn't make sense, because the cross-country program really comes out big for that, for that event.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep, cross-country. So we'll make a change.
So moved.
If that's where we are.
Second.
Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's great.
That is great.
Um, kinda moved around on the agenda. So, subcommittee reports. Uh, budget and finance met yesterday, Michael can give us an update on that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Quick update.
Uh, we met discussing the budget, um, looking at some challenges regarding the budget next year, we're still waiting to hear from the town, kind of a, a more firm number of, of where we need to come in. Um, it's sort of work in progress and I guess we should know that end of January sometime. We should get a much better sense, I don't know about actual number, but a much better sense of where we'll need to be.
Great.
And the budget will come to the school committee on February fourth.
Next week.
Yeah, and we didn't, uh, yesterday make a, we didn't make a, a, a date for the next meeting, right?
Yeah. Yeah. We didn't, we'll, we'll have to do that.
So Laura can do that and send that out, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for that. Um, governance?
Okay, we, um, met last Friday and we really worked on three different areas. Um, was recently brought to our attention from Margaret and Carol that we really need to implement, create a preschool tuition payment policy, uh, because I think we mentioned twelve families are considerably behind in their payments, which totals about eighteen thousand dollars behind. So we were working on developing that policy. It's sort of in a semi-draft form, I would say.
You have something in your packet, but it's really not written like a policy, so we, we need to write it like a policy, but it, it really is about the payment policy.
Yeah, yes.
Cheryl's right, you know, that's what this, this is written for parents, this, I think what Margaret did is just typed up what she sends out to parents, but that won't fly as a policy, it needs to feel more.
Right.
Does it need to be a preschool policy or just sort of a district-wide payment of fees?
Well, you know what, that, we had that conversation and I think that this really is the kind of thing, really, we use it as a more of a set of procedures than supposed to a policy. Sometimes the word policy gets interchanged. Um, we have talked about that, cause I think Joan had seen that in Beverly, there was a, a s- a policy that dealt with fees for all different things.
We had lots of fees, we had fees for everything, so, and we depended on the re- we depended on the revenue a lot, so when people weren't paying, there was, we didn't have a policy that backed up any kind of, you know, if, I couldn't call somebody and say, you know, our policy says that your student can't return or can't take music lessons or whatever, cause there was no policy. So they, I, I should get a copy of that, they drafted a policy and then, I was gonna suggest, for each, for each fee then, there were different procedures, so for, we, you know, people paid for preschool and, and kindergarten, so there was a, a timeline that if they went beyond that, their child would be, you know, whatever. And then there were athletic policies, so there was all the, uh, procedures, there were all these procedures, but it really needs to tie back to a school committee policy to have any meat to it.
So what policy did it, what was the school committee policy? Um, was it, what was it called? Was it like a?
I don't know, I'll have to look for it, but it was, it was very, it was, it was kind of a broad.
Well, you ended up, you must've had, so you ended up getting a policy, because you ended up, in some cases, having to go to small claims court.
Yes. Right, so what the school committee approved was that's kind of like we do without a policy, is that, you know, like when they owe lunch fees, we'll follow you to graduation. We can't do that with something like preschool, because we can't sustain, we can't sustain preschool. Uh, the school committee, uh, also went as far as to say that we would take families to small claims court as a last resort, and we did. We did do that, so, you know, but to do that, you really need a, a, a committee-backed policy.
What is the, um, what is the amount of money at small claims court? It's a, what's the threshold?
Oh, how much could you get?
No, li- yeah, like if you are, is it five thousand?
How high? Range, that's the range.
It might be five thousand.
Something like that, I don't know the exact.
Is it five thousand? Yeah.
Okay, so if it's more than five thousand, then we have to, right, okay.
You have to sue them.
But we're, it's not gonna get there.
No. It can't. Can't.
But, you know, it is.
That's a good idea, that's great.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're working on that.
Yeah, so we're working on that, and then the other two areas that we've, have been ongoing is the homework policy and the bus transportation policy. Where, um, you know, at, at our meetings, we've been really looking at language of, you know, what we wanted to say. And both Carol and I worked on like a second draft.
Yep.
We both did, so then we merged the drafts together and I think we're pretty much there.
We're closer, yeah.
Um, but we do wanna have the article included with the specific guidelines that the homework committee came up with whenever that committee met.
Oh, yeah, before, so there's the policy, which is just the broad, and then, then there were guidelines. And actually, the guy, you, you really can't find many homework policies. They just.
Well, or they exist, but they're very, they're, they're not.
They're, they're usually guidelines.
Well, they're more.
They're usually the guidelines as opposed to a policy.
Like written in handbooks, so to speak.
Handbooks, right, yes, yeah.
So, but I think what's in the middle high school handbook and the Pembroke handbook will support, you know, what we're saying, pretty much.
Yes.
Um.
I mean, we changed a few, we're recommending a few, uh, changes, but, you know, like, uh, that they, that they can count at the upper elementary grades, because Margaret and the staff have been saying, you know, that a lot of kids maybe don't do their homework, because it doesn't, doesn't count, right? So, I mean, we, we don't wanna be doing that to little K and one and two and three kids, but when fourth grade up, we're recommending that ten percent to third grade.
Right. And it does count, right.
It can't count more than ten percent.
Right, and also to be consistent, so within a grade level, you don't have one teacher counting it thirty percent, one teacher counting it, so, so I think that'll be good.
Yes.
So it has to be the same.
Yeah.
Um, so we're almost there on that.
But that would come to you, you would not have to do the first, second and third reading, since we already have one. So the recommendations would be something you could review and approve.
Approved.
Okay, and lastly, the bus transportation, where, um, again, both Carol and I, um, with Pam's help, um, and ideas,
Yeah.
we came up with a survey type idea that we're still really fine tuning, um, that would go out to parents of students who do not currently qualify for bus to see if, um, they're interested for a small fee to pay for a bus at a centralized location. Which is a really creative idea that, based on our, um, resource challenges. Uh, one, centralized location would be Pearlie School and one would be, um, over at Patriot Lane, so two sides of town. If those stops are closer to them than Pembroke School, if they're interested in a fee and whatnot. Um, but I know Carol said that she spoke to the bus company and they said that would be feasible.
Mm-hmm. That what it would happen, so we, we've been talking to the bus company about a couple of things, um, but one of the things that they did say was if we took one of the five buses and we did, we did go to those locations and those were the only two locations, then you start that, I'm gonna make it a quarter of, um, quarter, you get, you get to the school at about ten of eight, so you probably start at seven-thirty, yeah. Cause you're only going to two places. You drop those kids off, so we have to figure out the supervision of that as well. But, um, and then the, that bus would go back out and go get the rest of the kids and then they'd arrive, you know, before the start of the school day. So obviously, that'd be, have to be a smaller number of kids than, you know, a bus of seventy-seven. But the only way that works is if you can change the routes and distribute the majority of your kids off of the four buses, and then your fifth bus would have two runs, but one would be very short. Right, so, and if, and why we would take the apartments would be that that's, you know, there's enough people in one location, where, you know, so, so this only works, that's why the survey. This only works if, if we have seats available and then we need to assess how many people want it. So if we get forty people who want it, and right, and there's twenty-five or thirty kids that come from the buses, from the apartments, perfect. We can accommodate, but, you know, we have to, if there's a hundred and twenty people who want it, then we're gonna have a problem. And then we have to figure out, okay, then how do we, then how do we figure it out? Do we do a, just a lottery? Random lottery, you, you, you get in the lottery, your family gets in the lottery, so you got three kids, okay, you get three spots. Or do you do, okay, between, uh, one, one point four miles and one point five miles, you get first choice. You get first pick, you know, do, do, do you do that? What's the most fair way?
The lottery seems to be the most fair, I believe.
And then we have to, yeah, so, so we have to figure that out.
Have to pound that, yeah. I appreciate you guys spending so much time on that, but I do think it's worthwhile, because it was enough through the years, there's been enough, um, discussion that I think it warrants us to look into it, so the creative solutions that you are coming up with is certainly, I think, saying to the public that we, we notice that there's a problem and we wanna help as much as we can, as you had said, though, I mean, budget, um, is certainly, yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Right, and there are constraints.
And there's a couple of options that we can just, you know, again, dependent upon what the survey says, then we can make those options.
Yeah.
Right, and we have, have had to talk to Margaret also, because it will impact.
Yes, before the beginning of school.
Right. Oh, right, because the kids would need supervision.
Before school and some kids will be delivered earlier and.
We, we sort of have gotten to the point though, where we, we, we kind of figure we can't really change the bus mileage. I mean, there were some things we did decide, we, we don't wanna increase, um, the, the, the amount of trans, the, the, the distance for high school kids, which we could do. We don't, we don't, we would, we looked at the one mile for the little guys. And that was over a hundred additional kids, now, not everybody would ride, of course. But right now, that's one of the things we discussed at the safety me- meeting this morning, is, you know, for some reason, the buses are more full now than they even were in the fall. So there's two buses that are pretty much at capacity and others that were in the fifties are now, you know, into the sixties, mid-sixties, maybe a little seventy.
No, what do you think that is, that, what do you think is the driving force with that? Do you think it's because of more working parents or no? Like, why are there so many people from the buses?
I think there's some of that, I think maybe weather has something to do with it too.
Oh, now, I think it's weather. Oh, so you think so? See, I would think that, are you saying cold?
If, yeah, if you, if you were walking to school.
Yeah, instead of thinking walking. Oh, cause I was, I was thinking that. Or riding their bike.
Or even if a family has to get babies in the car to drive the first grader to school.
Yeah.
Sure, right, the older ones.
Right. Yeah, it's, yeah, so.
Yeah.
So, you know, but so we didn't, we sort of weren't recommending the, the change in the mileage. We are looking at the software, so that will help us with the routes, cause that was a, that was a question people, people had raised. I don't know, we're gonna come up with a solution that everybody's gonna be happy with, cause it's probably not gonna be following the, in the main roads.
There's no perfect solution.
But I'm surprised if there isn't a transportation software out there, a software out there that does do it, like, like everybody else's.
Well, they, they might, we don't know all the features of it, well.
Cause this one, as we talked about yesterday, it is more the
It's the crow flies.
The crow flies, yeah.
Well, I don't know, we, we can maybe program it different ways, that's why we have to learn about it, that's why we wanna buy it now.
So why didn't the survey out?
Um, well, we. We have to agree on the final questions, we thought we might throw it by you guys too. We would, you know, so we could email it to you, but when you de- don't, don't debate it, you gotta send your comments just to me.
Yeah.
Right, so, cause I don't wanna be violating any open meeting laws.
And it's gonna be quickened to the point?
Well, that's what, we, we want your thoughts on it, right, to see whether or not it.
Yes. Well, because right now, it's a little, it's like more of a document.
Right, you have to put it in a Survey Monkey or something.
And.
Right, yeah.
So.
So just take a look at the wording and.
Yeah.
Okay.
See if the questions, pretend, pretend you're one of those parents and say, if I filled this out, you know, like, is this gonna make sense to me?
Yeah.
And we, we are, have no pride in authorship, we're very happy to have feedback.
We do have pride in authorship. Or maybe not, I would say, yeah.
We're not fixated on it, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're not, we're not gonna defend every word, if you have a suggestion.
Okay, that's good.
That's, that, that, these guys have, I mean, they're brand new, both of them are brand new, they're doing a awesome, doing a lot of work, yeah.
Governance is a big deal too, because then, you know, these things pop up, but then you're also supposed to be, you know, monitoring the, the book to make sure that we're up to date, and it's a busy, very busy subcommittee.
Right, there's the annual cycle and then mass will send.
But it's interesting, because then you get to know the policies, you, you're, I'm shocked at how many policies are in there, like, people have thought of everything, you know.
And yet, there's still new policies that come out.
Right, yeah, yeah, right, so.
The policy is a major function of a school committee.
A new boss gets passed through.
The policy is a major function of a school committee. So that's a very, it is a very important subcommittee.
Yeah, I, that was the first subcommittee I was on, and I, I remember Ann Donna here telling me that, that that was an important one to get on, just so I was familiar with, with the goings on. Have you been on it?
Yeah.
You can.
I'm, I'm busy.
Yes, you've been a little busy.
He is, yeah.
Well, that policy manual is.
Dawn.
Very difficult.
Yeah.
Laura made a joke, um, to me about, you need to go home and read this. And so, I did, or, oh, I didn't read the whole thing, but I started.
I lost it, sure, yeah, and then you're like, what?
And she's like.
Did you really?
Knows not to say something to you, you'll be literal.
I'm still on B.
I'm like, is there gonna be a quiz? But, um, good stuff.
Okay, thank you for that.
Years ago, the goal of the school committee when I first got on was they wanted to significantly reduce the number of policies in that book.
Oh.
And it's only increased.
Yeah, it's increased, definitely.
There's been no reduction.
Uh, negotiations is meeting next week, right, the twenty-first, or?
Mm-hmm. Yes, and Katie, uh, for the GISA, you know, Katie emailed me today and said, you know, do you anticipate at the first meeting that there's going to be an exchange of proposals? Well, I mean, my schedule's been like crazy lately too, so I thought, oh, gee, do we have a strategy session before that meeting? Like, I don't think so, cause Tuesday's gonna come quick. So, I said to her, I don't think so, we, we, I would propose we go over the ground rules, we get our dates out, you know, everybody gets their calendars cross-referenced, and maybe we can talk in broad general terms about what maybe our interests are, um, and, but if you're ready to make your proposals, we, we'd be happy to s- start that, and she said, actually, no, she said, we're not gonna be ready to do that, the first meeting would be great for it. So I don't attes- anticipate the first meeting being very long.
Mm-hmm.
But then, we would need to meet to talk about what we would want to have for proposals.
Yeah, will Na- Naomi be at that first meeting, cause we talked to.
No, I, I, well, Charmaine's not coming, so Naomi held, Naomi's holding the date, but knowing that there's gonna be no exchange of proposals.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I think it would be money that we probably shouldn't spend.
Well. And the idea was, if Charmaine was going to come.
That's right, that's right, yes, but she's not, no.
But if she's not, then. Right.
Do we have strategy tomorrow morning?
Is there strategy tomorrow? Eight o'clock, right?
It better be in my calendar.
Okay, so Cheryl and PM are on that with an alternate of Suzanne.
Okay, so then maybe, well, I still, maybe we won't be, we'll have our idea, but I don't think we should make a proposal to them, a formal proposal. Let me just see, what it, do, we think that's tomorrow?
Do we need to meet tomorrow?
Eight AM. She's got half, okay, all right.
Look at the time, eight AM.
I know, I wouldn't even think you would bother, right, because if they're not ready, why, you know, I don't know.
That's because. Right, well, we won't bother discussing the strategies, but we should have a strategy, cause we should know what we're thinking.
Yeah, it's gonna be very informal. Okay.
Right, but we won't form, it won't be like we're scrambling to get it ready, you know.
So you wanna keep tomorrow morning?
Well, unless, and, and unless that doesn't really work for you guys, I mean, with, there shouldn't be the same, you shouldn't feel any pressure.
No, I mean, I.
Who's on this?
I'm not on it, but I, I would say, if I were you guys, I would say no.
So who's on it, I'm sorry, again, Pam, oh, Pam and Cheryl, okay.
Pam and Cheryl.
Yeah.
With Suzanne.
Well, what do you guys think, I, I, I'm fine, I, I'm happy to put it on my calendar, I know I have a subint- interview at nine, so we just, it would be a, a small window.
Okay.
Does that work for you, or do you wanna cancel?
Cut it off.
Eight, eight thirty to nine?
Well, it probably won't be worth it.
Okay.
So, do you, I mean, we can certainly cancel it, we've had a lot of meetings, uh, we, we can, we, we can get together, in fact, could people do this? Could we get together just a little bit before the actual meeting on Tuesday?
Meet before the meeting.
And that way.
That's fine, I know for both Pam and I, this is a new, like, we're walking new territory, so.
Hi, Mike.
Hi.
Okay, well, you know what, then I, I, I will get that, I will put it in the calendar and we'll, we can, if you guys are okay with eight o'clock, cause we met the other day at eight o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm fine with that, and we can maybe just walk through the process, cause if you don't know the process. You, Joan, can you do that?
Yeah, it definitely can be, one, it's a decade and a year.
Okay, try.
And if you can't, well, that's okay.
Yeah, I, I think it can be.
You can't come, that's okay, well, let's do it, let's do.
Could we, could we do? Do eight fifteen?
Yes, yes, we can do eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen's better, compromise.
You don't.
Okay, well, cause I'm juggling. Okay, eight fifteen's fine, I don't, you got, I don't know how, did you guys agree to eight, I, I don't know, I, I didn't, I, I didn't even have it in my calendar.
We, we didn't, I mean, my schedule's changing all the time, and so.
Changing, so, so eight, eight fifteen.
And you have something at nine?
I do.
Okay. Yes.
I mean, it's not something that's gonna take me long, but I do have.
It's a tight, just this week is pretty tight.
Okay, so eight fifteen you wanna do.
Okay, so public relations, Pam or Michael? You guys must have met because we have the operating protocols in our.
We. Actually have not.
No, we haven't.
Oh, so who brought that?
No, that, I mean, this came up at one of the meetings, that the protocols haven't been updated since Anne Vlachos on the committee.
Yep.
So, more informational, do we need to update them?
Can we have new people on?
Can we have new people on, do we need to sign them and post them on the website?
Yeah, we definitely should re-sign them, and Pam, you spent a lot of time, you were the one that, yeah, brought this together.
Well, I. But we talked about whether or not it, it's necessary to do the signature, remember we talked about that?
That was, seems like quite a while, so.
Right, yeah, I think that was almost a real.
Well, did you review them, cause when I reviewed them, I was like, wow, I, I remember the time that you put into it, I mean, I.
Yes, she did, Pam was really instrumental.
Yes, I think we, we did at the time, I mean, I, I, but I'm per, like, again, there's no ownership, I mean, if people look at this and think that we, there's a reason to update it, I think we should, or on the other hand, people look at it and they think that's perfectly fine, it makes sense.
I think when you meet with Mike, um, Mike should show him this.
We should just maybe reorganize it.
Yep, we should bring that, he can see.
That's, that's a good idea, that's a great idea.
On Friday, on Friday.
We're gonna be packing a lot into that meeting.
But, uh, my, my only question is. I think we talked about it, is do you need, do, be, in order to, do you, do, I mean, having the signatures means that it forces you to look at it every so often, right, so that's not a bad thing, but we were just wondering, you know, if you needed to sign it,
Mm-hmm.
if, if there had to be a signature, if it's in your policy manual or whatever.
I know, I don't think there needs to be people's signature on there.
I don't really see why.
Because it just changes, especially with the way the committee has been going, it seems like it's changing more frequently than.
It's just.
Protocols. I, I would vote to take the signatures off.
Yeah, do we have to have a vote to do that?
Name up simplicity if it's.
No, I think, I think we could do that.
They're just really a study guy, I think we post up on it.
Yeah, I'd be hunting them up.
Okay, take it off, okay.
Yeah.
Keep, keep it simple when you can.
Yes.
All right, so PR, so you brought that up, so.
So we need to schedule a meeting.
And the, the only, I guess it's not PR, it was Baker Adams, we met about Baker Adams.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's about all there is to say about that.
Good, how did that go? Was that, okay, well, you know, I think we, we have spent a lot of time on Baker Adams, and I wonder, are we ever going to be a hundred percent like happy with it, I know we have spent a lot of time on this, and it just always seems like the process is so, so important and so rewarding to me as a school committee member, I just think of that as one of my favorite duties, but it's still a very difficult one, and there's no real good way to do it.
I agree.
No, well, but I think if we can in- improve every year, until we look at it and we say, this really works.
You know.
Just sort of streamline and improve it.
Yes.
What, yes, you know, it's intended to be, um.
Yeah.
You know that it's true.
Well, for, for example, in the streamlining sense, one of the ideas was, do we make it an online application?
I know.
And that's a great, that was your idea.
Oh, that's a great idea.
So, you know, it's a B page packet or whatever.
I think that's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
Yes, it is.
So, stuff like that.
Right.
I mean, things that, I mean, we even sat with Chief Cudmore.
Mm-hmm.
For hours, him telling us about this gentleman, cause we wanted to know more about the actual person, so we could say, okay, what did this gentleman really want
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
us as a school committee to do, because he gave it to the school committee.
Right. He did?
Right.
After responsibility, so, it's, it's.
Yes.
To have that embodiment.
I, I don't know if people fully understand, like, at graduation, when we give that out, really how much time and thought goes into each candidate and, you know, it is a big deal.
Yeah.
It is a, it's a very, um.
And all the time that the students put into it.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, and does it, you know, it's well deserved, so.
And then all the time.
And when, when did they, kids start applying for that?
It was in.
Yeah, April.
It's in April.
April, yeah.
Yeah, around date, right.
I think it's like April first, and then they, that, that the applications are made available to them.
And then it's like a two-week process.
Yeah.
So we need to schedule another meeting around that, or have we?
We have not, did you guys sent my, my first?
I, I looked at, I, yep, I looked at it.
I realized I, I spelled your name, your email wrong, but I reset it, and I don't know if you.
Yes, yes, I did look at it, I, yeah, I, and I'll, I'll look at it, you know.
Okay.
Did you?
And give you some comments.
Yeah, just in the last day here, I sent it like two or three weeks ago, and I know there was.
I think the only, I think the only thing that was a little mushy to me was still that section on, uh, like, the activities and, you know, the, that little section, everything else made perfect sense to me, but.
I don't.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll resend it, and make sure you get.
Uh, yeah, if you resend it, that would be great. We were talking about two shorter essays instead of one longer essay, so there was a, a few things that.
We, I don't.
Microsoft album did a frustrating, and I had been known to lose emails in Microsoft albums.
Shorter essay?
We were talking.
Oh.
We've been going back and forth on this discussion.
I did.
What would the two essays be on, like, one would be on one topic and?
Well, it had to do with the section and the section, uh, that's weighted pretty equally, uh, the one on, um, school and community activities. It was discussion about having a short prompt that had, that was related directly to, um, the, the community service, and then the
Community service.
other prompt was pretty consistent with what was before, which was kind of like your goal, you know, how would the scholarship further your goals, which was kind of similar to the prompt we had.
Okay.
But it would wait, it would be shorter and it would wait more equally, that was kind of what we were talking about, right, Michael? We still wanted a listing of their activities, but, so we're, we're looking at that.
Yeah.
And I also thought that the letters of recommendation were a little redundant, because it, to me, it just seemed that, um, they're gonna give glowing recommendations anyhow, you know, and that, and every one after the other, it was glowing, and
Yeah. Yeah.
It still didn't give me a sense of that person as much as the activities and the essay, and it was just another thing.
Yeah, and it waits really low, I mean, it really.
Right, cause you're not gonna. Yeah, it does wait, but it, it's a lot of time too, because when I see these, I feel like I have to read them, because this teacher put a lot of effort into that.
It does wait really low, but. Time-consuming, I wanna read everything.
And, and it's a lot of time.
But I will tell you, I mean, I, I, as somebody, I, I, I look at letters of recommendation a little bit differently than many do, especially when I hire people.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a lot of people say, ah, just exactly the same, they're gonna get good glowing.
But that's different, you're hiring them.
Yes, but I, I, what I look at, when I look at a letter of recommendation, is, you know, how well, how well does the person describe the, the person that we want, right, so they will always be glowing, but there are some of those recommendations where people will explain the financial need, or the fact that this is a kid who, you know, works really hard, I mean, I feel like it gives you a little sense of, of.
Certain circumstances in the student's life, that they might not be comfortable.
Yeah, it's five percent, so I think we had decided, I don't know, we went back and forth on that, right?
Revealing.
Yeah, it was, it was, we talked a, a lot about it.
And, did we say, and didn't we say that we wanted to s- keep it?
It is in the current draft.
It is in the current draft, and then the other thing that took a lot of time, and this is still a problem, is fin- the fin- the financial need piece.
You're gonna turn one, if you're gonna keep that in. It's definitely a problem.
How, how do you, how do you? How?
What, what is the weight now for financial?
Well, five percent, it's a little.
I mean, I, no, I, well, I, I had an, I had an idea, I mean, which we can, uh, you know, I mean, there are, there is, there are valid measures,
Yeah, sure.
We can just get rid of it.
Yeah.
such as the amount of financial aid a student qualifies for, which comes from the FASFA, which comes from.
FASFA, I know, but that's what I don't, I, I personally don't feel like I, I should be, uh, knowing that stuff, like, that to me is beyond what I feel like.
We were recommending using the same thing as the HICU, you do.
But, but, well, I don't wanna know, yeah.
Well. It's five percent, it's teeny.
So that's why I'm saying, why even have it?
But, 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 but then, because Baker Adams did indicate that he wanted to give resources to students who would financially struggle to afford a college education. But, but that's something, the, I think that the process here, the process here is that we would come up with a draft.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then present it to the whole school committee, so we'll have future opportunities to discuss whether we want
School committee, yeah.
Yeah. Sure, yeah.
this part in it or not, you know, it's, so that's, that's the intention.
Yep. Yeah, we'll put it on as an agenda item, so you can really pay attention to it.
Okay.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right, some time still.
We have some time still, yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Um, all right.
It's a good discussion.
It is a good discussion, thank you for that, so the safety meeting was this morning?
Mm-hmm, it was, yes, and thank you, I, I really, you know, I, I was on the safety subcommittee for about two or three years, I don't know, a while back, and it's a wonderful subcommittee, and it really, you know, helps you feel so confident, just to it, to hear the, the police, the professionalism and the, you know, collaborative spirit of the police department, and the fire department, and the principals, and it, I don't know, I'm just inspired every time I go to one of these meetings, so, thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Sure.
And, um, we, uh, we discussed transportation, um, Hope Duran had met with drivers and students, uh, ou- earlier about, um, appropriate bus behavior, and Cindy McKenzie from NRT thought that those meetings went very well, and they were very effective. Um, Cindy also mentioned that, uh, uh, there's some perception that there are more students on, on the buses recently, but there are no more students, they may be a little bit more crowded, because students are coming with their winter gear and their big puppy coats and.
That's what she said, she said their coats, you know, they're three in a seat, and all of a sudden they got their.
It, it's, it may feel tighter, but it's the same number of students. Margaret is gonna send home a letter to parents regarding appropriate cellphone use on the bus, no taking pictures or videos, um, and that students will need to use earbuds or headphones if they're listening to music, and if a student cannot respect the rules, then the privilege of using the cellphone would be taken from that student. Um, let's see, we discussed some of the bus, uh, route possibilities that we have already gone over this evening. Um, the Alice training is coming to Georgetown, and, uh, Penbrook faculty will train on April eighteenth and February tenth, is that right?
That, well, that's, we're working with the union on using, uh, an extension of Mar- uh, Margaret's faculty meeting in the tenth.
Well, Penbrook's.
Right. And, uh, the middle high school will train on April eighth, is that right?
Yes.
Was there some January, well, then parent information night is gonna be on January twenty-seventh.
That's what it is, January twenty-seventh, yeah.
Do we have a time and a place, I couldn't find.
Six thirty to eight, at, um.
Okay.
Oh, is it at the, on track?
At, at Penbrook, well, we were gonna do it at Penbrook, I, you know,
Is it, is it at?
I think Derek thought, I think we thought it would be better to have it at the school, at Penbrook, but, but you know what, li- before we do that, let's, it's all, it's all parents, so
At Penbrook?
Yeah, six thirty to eight. But is that for all parents?
let's think about that, I, I, let's think about that, cause it might make more sense to be more comfortable in the auditorium.
Okay, all right. Okay. Auditorium. All right, so I, I will, we wait.
Yeah, so, I, yeah, let me, um, let me think about that, I'll talk about that tomorrow with Derek and the chief, cause they'll be at the, obviously, they'll be at the training. Um, and we'll get that location, and it, it does probably make sense to do it at the middle high school, if the space is available, you know, they're, they're working on the play too, so, you know.
So, is it, so Penbrook isn't, tomorrow though, is, is Penbrook?
Penbrook is tomorrow.
Penbrook is tomorrow.
For the teachers.
Right, so did I not get that right?
Yeah.
She's talking about the parent forum.
No, but she talked about the faculty will train on April eighteenth and February tenth, so it's tomorrow.
Yeah, but, but, but the parent faculty will train.
Oh.
Is it this January, it's January?
January, tomorrow is the fifteenth, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
January fifteenth.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'll mix stuff here, okay.
That's okay.
Okay, so we'll help you, January fifteenth.
This is why I didn't issue this, this is just like.
Yeah.
Is the first two, like, the first two hours, and then we, we're still working on the second two hours, cause we did have to divide the time in half.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good.
Okay, good.
Um, and then the annual fire code inspections are gonna take place soon, uh, and the chief will check the doors, lights, storage, um,
Yeah.
we wanna follow up with the fire alarm people to fix the magnetic doors if they need fixing.
Yeah, yeah, I talked to Guy about that, and Mike Anderson about it, Mike says they all work, but, we're gonna.
Uh, before that.
Okay.
And we talked about a, a general guideline that no more than fifty percent of a classroom's walls should be covered with study material in a building with sprinklers, just as a general guideline, he, he expressed that there can be, you know, flexibility around that, if there's a special event, and just
Yes. Yeah.
in general, most of the time, um, and that windows should not be covered, um, and.
No, we paid a lot of money, especially in those silence rooms, to have them, being able to see.
Not those windows, the windows of the door.
Well, I, I mean, I guess, you know, it's, it's.
We don't wanna cover any windows.
No, it's right, but it's not, it's not safe for fire safety purposes, so, okay, and that's it.
Love light.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And has there been a, um, CPAC meeting at all?
Um, there was one in January twelfth.
Yeah, they made, they met during the day, I think, not, they alternate, so they alternate during the day, and I remember Donna saying there was a CPAC meeting during the day, so.
I was not able to get to that.
Okay. Oh, nine, 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 nine.
There was another CPAC meeting on, the next one is March fifteenth, also during the day.
So what do they do, like, every other month, they must do?
Um, no, they, it's generally every month, they're just, you know, skipping over February maybe because of February vacation, um.
Yeah. Okay, and I know Shelby, we're having a tough time getting, you know, her schedule is so busy, but I believe she, Laura pinned down, um, a meeting date for her to come in and, and she with us, so that's good.
I think, I think she's on her calendar, yeah.
Right.
That'd be great, that'll be good.
Right. Okay.
Um, so on March fifteenth, it'll be a general question and answer, um, from, with Dr. Straight, and, from, and I'm sure other people as well, teachers are, uh, from nine to ten AM at the Penbrook.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I also went today, um, from two thirty to four o'clock to the Quest Collaborative, and we began our working on their strategic plan initiative. It was very interesting, it, it really was, they don't have, um, a, a really, a strong, well-developed strategic plan, and so there was a facilitator in there, and there were principals and teachers from the school, uh, as well as another school committee member from North Andover, and it, it was mostly instructive today, they were, you know, telling us about what really needs to go into a strategic plan, um, which was, you know, interesting for me, having just come, uh, come off of this, um, our most recent strategic plan development.
So I'm sure you had a lot of input, though.
I did, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and, so then we'll be in little working committees next time, which is in two weeks.
Which is good. So when are they gonna put that together, like, for next, so their strategic plan, are they gonna, like, save for the next school?
Yes, for the next school year, yes.
School year?
Okay.
Are they doing a multi-year plan, Pam, or just the one year?
Yes, it's, it's gonna be a three-year plan, yes.
Three-year plan.
Okay.
And what else, um, uh, we met to discuss, uh, the superintendent's evaluation, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I have minutes for them, but I forgot to bring them, I'm sorry, so, but, but basically, all we did was we brought, uh, we're, we're, um, um, reassessing, updating the superintendent's performance goals, and we looked at last year's performance goals, and you showed us a, a list of su- suggestions for this year's performance goals, and, um, then we emailed other, um, other school committee members in accordance with open meeting law, so we're not having any deliberations, we're just asking for your input, and then we will get together again and, and, um, share it and come up with some suggestions, and then bring those suggestions to the committee.
Share that input. And when you meet with Mike, Mike's gonna talk about, he's gonna talk about the evaluation process, so, you know, he may have some input into.
Right.
And that's on, um, the twenty-second, right?
Yes, at this.
Yeah, I don't know why it's off my calendar.
And that's at your office?
It, yeah, I think that's what we're thinking, right?
Yes.
That's six PM?
Six o'clock? Yep, six to eight.
Yeah.
So that would be a good opportunity to talk to, um, him about that.
Yep.
Because that was one of the main reasons why I wanted to, to, talk with him was because of the, um.
It's a topic, right? Yeah.
Yep, six o'clock.
We haven't really met with him in a couple of years, so, I'm sure we'll have.
No, a couple of years, yeah, we're back in, that time in Topsfield, we had a, um, in this, in the summer, we had a, a gathering, um, it was like a half day.
I was out there.
No, it was, no, it was only me and Pam.
No. No, it was you and Pam, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I enjoyed it.
Oh, I always enjoy talking with Mike.
Um, yeah, it, it was, it was good.
It's very knowledgeable.
So I think it will, it will, um, be beneficial to all of us, and I'm glad that we were all able to figure out a date that we could all attend, cause I think that's important.
You guys get a gold star for Friday night, and not many school committees who are meeting on a Friday night, and Mike gets a gold star too for making himself available on a Friday night.
I know.
He has to bring dinner.
It's my book club night. Your book club night, oh, dear.
That's what I said to Laura, he has to bring dinner, I'm going for a Friday night.
Yes, you know, we tried so hard to schedule this, it's really difficult.
Well, I know, we probably.
It's hard.
I'll just be half an hour.
I'll just be half an hour late for the book club, but, no, maybe.
Uh, we'll figure that out.
Schedules are crazy.
Um, okay, so I think we are good for this evening, um, we do not have a need for an executive session.
Yeah.
So, um, at this point in time, I will make a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting um at nine forty-five PM.
So moved. Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you, have a good night.